All right. Seven o'clock. Good evening. This meeting of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. Mr. Hill, would you provide your invocation for us?
Father, we thank you for our gentlemen in all three countries.
Yes, Lord.
We have two things to thank you for. In November, one was the President's Day celebration. We thank you for all that you serve in our country and be with the families of the ones who lost their loved ones in that way. Father, we thank you for allowing us to come and just season of Thanksgiving. We pray that you would be with the ones who less fortunate we are. You give us guidance and wisdom tonight.
Yeah.
You give us our short times. And you give us very deep.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Do you stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am, chairman. We have one addition to the agenda that will be under closed session. Item 2.2-3711A7, legal counsel consultation regarding potential and probable litigation involving land use.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the amendments for Mr. Costin?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda with the said amendments stated by Minister Costin.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. In the package, we have five sets of minutes. October 20th, regular meeting, special meetings for July 28th, two on August 15th, and October 17th, closed session. Are there any amendments to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we receive and adopt the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented and stand adopted. We're going to move on to delegations from the public. We've got, each speaker will have up to five minutes at the podium. Sonny Abbott.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
I'll be brief this evening. When will the redistricting actually take effect? What issues must be resolved prior to the Attorney General not objecting to the county's submission? Each of you must be aware of the difficulties experienced by voters during the recent election process. The vast number of ballots, moving the ward voting system from May to November, along with the attempt to isolate the five wards within the nine existing precincts, much of that outlined by the state legislature. That created numerous issues. If this board is going to resubmit the same proposed redistricting plan, there will be a significant volume of work for the registrar prior to a potential June primary. Additionally, those considering running for the Board of Supervisors or the school board must have a clear understanding of their respective district boundaries. That knowledge won't be available until redistricting is not objected to by the Attorney General. Therefore, collecting signatures on petitions for those choosing to run would be delayed. Knowing when redistricting actually takes effect matters. Now, answering questions needs to happen. I seriously doubt this board can go month after month and remain silent. Regardless of how the precincts are developed, continued avoidance of answering questions of your constituents would be problematic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Slugger Marzett.
How you folks doing?
How you doing?
Good. Glad to be up here. I was going to bring a point because it comes to my attention all the time. It's a thing in our Virginia law about family subdivisions. A lot of misconceptions about it. People are scared to death, or some people are, that you're going to circumvent it. Well, in the history of Virginia, there's only been one circumventing case, and that one was thrown out. So, you know, but what I wanted to tell you is that in the, in the, under the subdivision regulations, it's mandatory that you have a family subdivision. It's mandatory. And in doing so, it says also that you will have reasonable provisions in that. So, you've got mandatory provisions and you've got optional provisions. Those two statutes in law cover everything the county is allowed to do. Mandatory, that speaks for itself, and then optional. The reason they have them there is you can't go outside of those in any way. You've got to stick to those rules. Your family subdivision ordinance here in the county has got a five-year holding period, and it's also got an affidavit you've got to sign. That's not in those provisions. Therefore, you can't do it. Attorney General's opinion, I know some people think he don't amount to nothing. He's the third highest position in the state. You know, if a judge needs help, he asks Attorney General for opinion, if it's not already in case law. So, what I want to bring, a lot of people think, well, it's only for building your family home on it. No. I've got five children. Say, three of them want to live in different states. Does that mean that they shouldn't be able to get a family inheritance? So, if they get the property and they don't want to move on it, at least they can sell it and build wherever they happen to want to live. So, it's not, it's not, another thing, if you think about it, if the, if the zoning ordinances are reasonable, probably wouldn't be any need for a family subdivision. But I'd just like for y'all to review that, if you would. You know, there are a few things, and I don't want to come up here and complain all the time. But a lot of people are using this provision when they really don't need to use it. But this signing affidavit and stuff, it's clear. I'd like to give you all this. You have a bailiff starting me to bring this up there? So, y'all can review it. This is Attorney General's opinion.
Thank you.
I can thread the saw machine running. Anyway, I just want to thank y'all a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes delegations from the public. And next on the agenda, public hearings. Tonight, we'll conduct a public hearing relating to an ordinance for erroneous assessment of refunds. Mr. Costin, will you provide an introduction for us?
Yes, ma'am, chairman. Ma'am Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is an advertised ordinance hearing to allow for tax refunds up to $2,500 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1-3891. What that does is it simply makes it a little bit more efficient, speeds up the administration a bit. Wherever the Commissioner of Revenue has identified an erroneous assessment, an erroneous payment, she can notify the treasurer to refund that amount of money. Right now, the current system without this ordinance in place is each and every refund, regardless of size, has to come before the, the board. This is, if you will, a blanket approval by the board for the commissioner and the treasurer to work together to administratively handle this process. That state code section does allow for up to $10,000, but they've only asked for the 2,500 limit. You have a suggested motion for you, and the commissioner and her staff are here this evening if you have any questions. You have in your packet also the statutory authority as well as a, some information provided by the treasurer, communication, excuse me, from the, from the commissioner. The treasurer has been consulted in this matter. She's, she's fine with it provided the ordinance passes. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Costin or Ms. Hudson? I guess we'll need a motion to open the public hearing.
So, move, ma'am chair.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing regarding, regarding ordinance for erroneous assessment of refunds is now open. We don't have anyone signed up to speak. Is there anyone this evening that wishes to speak, either in favor or against this matter? All right.
Madam Chair, I move to close the hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. So, there's a suggested motion in the package relating to staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance. Anyone wish to put that motion on the floor?
Madam Chair, I move that the Notaway County Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance before was titled "An Ordinance for Tax Refunds Up to $2,500 Pursuant to Section 58.1-3891", for the treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue to administratively refund citizens who have overpaid taxes due to incorrect assessments not exceeding $2,500 and reliance upon authority granted by the Virginia Code in order to expedite refunds to citizens provided this board receives quarterly reports on those actions.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. The ordinance as presented stands adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to presentations. Mr. Costin, any employee recognitions this evening?
Madam Chair, we have one this evening. The individual is not present, Jennifer B. Nelson for five-year certificate. We'll make sure that she gets that at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Mister Regis Rennells here. Would you like to provide the election certification report, Mr. Rennells?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Sheckleton, distinguished member of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors, County Administrator Costin. Citizens of Notaway County, I first want to thank each of you for extending me this opportunity to brief you on the election results for Notaway County for the 2022 November general election. A total of 4,804 votes, I'm sorry, 4,804 registered voters in Notaway chose to exercise their constitutional right to make their choices known by casting in person and mail in ballots. There were also an additional 49 provisional ballots, provisional votes cast. Thirty-four hundred of the previously stated total chose to vote in person by either utilizing the 45 days of early in-person voting, either at the general registrar's office or at the Blackstone Police Department, or by voting in person on November 8th. In total, 1,178 citizens of Notaway participated in early in-person voting, 795 in Burkeville, 383 in Blackstone. A total of 296 mail-in absentee ballots were sent out to registered voters at their request, and a total of 214 were returned and counted. Following of the unofficial results, and I still say unofficial, there are some final certification processes that have not occurred, and I do not want to overstep my boundaries by excluding the electoral board. So, I still say unofficial as of today. From the Noto, from the November 8th, 2022 general election, these totals include write-in votes. Okay. Out of a total of 4,810 votes cast for the office of the House of Representatives, Robert Bob Good received 3,079 votes, 64% of total votes cast. Joshua Thornburg received 1,702 votes, roughly 36% of total votes cast. Third District School Board, Damian Emro, received 677 votes, or 94% of the total votes cast. For Burkeville Town Offices, Mayor Brian Welch received a total of 135 votes, roughly 92% of the total votes cast for that office. For Town Council, Randolph Miller received a total of 95 votes. James Bruce received a total of 96 votes. Gerald Smith received a total of 105 votes. Pearl Bowling received a total of 101 votes. Ivory Oliver received a total of 100 votes. Robert Carwell received a total of 101 votes. And William Billy Ray Thompson received a total of 31 write-in votes from a total of 61 write-in candidates, which would unofficially award him the final seat on the Burkeville Town Council. Crew Town Offices, Mayor Philip Miskovic received a total of 546 votes, roughly 93% of the total votes cast for that office. Town Council, out of a total of 3,053 votes cast, Anne Stinson received a total of 444 votes. William Abel received a total of 424 votes. Timothy Davis received a total of 340 votes. Jessica Foss received a total of 325 votes. Donald Reed received a total of 323 votes. Susan Yates received a total of 278 votes. Robert Knight received a total of 387 votes. Brenda Payne received a total of 443 votes. There were 94 write-in candidates for these offices. And of those list of names I read to you, the top seven candidates would comprise the next iteration of the Crew Town Council. Blackstone Town Offices, Mayor L. Benjamin Green received a total of 699 votes, or roughly 85% of the total votes cast for this office. For at-large Town Council, out of a total of 1,180 votes cast, Eric Nash received a total of 545 votes. Christopher Page received a total of 420 votes. Write-in candidates were, numerous the number of write-in candidates, received a total of 215 votes. Ward A, out of a total of 156 votes cast, Anthony Miller received a total of 87 votes. Bennett Wilson received a total of 68 votes, and there was one write-in vote cast. Ward B, out of a total of 125 votes cast, Wesley Gorman received a total of 112 votes, and there were 13 write-in candidates. Ward C, out of a total of 268 votes cast, Jacob Almond received a total of 250 votes, and there were 18 write-in candidates. Ward D, Carolyn Craig Williams received a total of 139 votes, and there were five write-in candidates. I'm sorry, there were four write-in candidates. Ward E, out of a total of 168 votes cast, Lynette Nguyen, I'm sorry, Ward D. Did I give you Ward D?
Yes.
I did.
Yes.
Ward E, out of a total of 168 votes cast, Lynette Nguyen, I'm sorry, Loyette Nguyen received a total of 157 votes, and there were 11 write-ins. It is notable that this, of course, was my very first opportunity to engage in such an endeavor. Notaway County had some 23 ballot styles for these elections. Mr. Abbott mentioned the complexity of voting in a period prior to redistricting. So, this was indeed a challenging opportunity. Obviously, there were some issues involved with some early voting, but I believe that the, the citizens who came out and performed on Election Day performed at an exceptionally high level. While the figures I provided reflect the unofficial amounts of votes cast during the 2022 general election, I would like to conclude my report by acknowledging the following individuals who are the real reason why I stand here in front of you this evening to report that contrary to what was stated in regards to how this fall's election would turn out in Notaway. The general registrar's office reports that the Notaway County had an extremely successful election, i.e. this guy didn't fall. But when the truth be told, the successful outcome I just stated is not the results of my efforts, but the hard work, determination, and willingness of those who decided to extend their patriotic service to their fellow citizens. I want to, first of all, extend my heartfelt thanks to each and every individual who served as an officer of election. On Tuesday, November 8th, and during the 45 days of early in-person voting, none of what I informed you of could have been achieved without them. And while I won't provide you with an extended list of all of those names, I feel duty-bound to share the names of those who agree in the face of overwhelming opposition to accept the role of chief officer of election for the November 8th general election. Regardless of political party affiliation, the following individuals, some of who took on the role as chief for the very first time, illustrated leadership characteristics that cannot go unmentioned. Those individuals are Danny Williams, LaFonda Redd, Nancy Roach, Brenda Lee, Jackie Green August, Ed O'Neill, Laura Outlaw, John Listman, Betty Lou Lages, and Lowell Harper. I want to thank all of them for basically taking a chance on someone who has shown themselves unproven. I want them all to know how grateful I am to simply be associated with them. But there are still two individuals who cannot be left unspoken as I offer this report. They are Deputy Registrar Marie Lynch, who has shown herself to truly be a cornerstone of my office, and Nan Lambert, who while enduring the loss of her husband over the past month, mustered up enough energy and will to come in and continue to help us get through the election. In my estimation, that kind of effort deserves commendation, and I can't thank her enough for continuing to want to assist the office of the registrar in completing the election. And I am even more proud to say that I believe I have made a lifetime friend. In conclusion, I just want to thank you, the distinguished Board of Supervisors, Mr. Costin, for extending me this opportunity, and I thank you all for continuing to give me your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rash, we've got Ricky Rash, Director of Piedmont Soil and Water Conservation District with us.
Permission to approach?
Yes.
We have some copies of our annual report, a handout to each of you. Didn't bring enough for the whole audience, but you can find us on PiedmontSWCD.org. They are the local subdivision, one of the jokes that we like to tell in our annual meeting. That's upcoming here shortly is that we are the Rodney Dangerfield of elected officials. The difference in what I do as an elected official is, is I won't try to compare and contrast. Lower threshold to get on the ballot, we only have to have 25 signatures, but we are not paid for any of our services. All of our time is volunteered. So, all of the meetings I go to across the state in one form or fashion is, is on my time. But, Madam Chair, person, members of the board, members of the audience, County Administrator Costin, we appreciate the time to come here to Piedmont tonight. For the first time in my 25 years on the board, we had a Notaway County rep come to our meeting, Mr. Zodi. I was busy down the road here, a mile or so, and was not there, so we felt that we would return the favor to Notaway and somebody from our board show up from our, and speak to you guys. If you thumb through the annual report, we run the same fiscal year as all governments, June 1 to Ju, July 1 to June 30th. And just to give you some highlights from our last meeting, to date, we have 18,000 acres of conservation practices put on the three counties, Amelia, Notaway, and Prince Edward. All of that goes to the watershed implementation plan, which is part of the Chesapeake Bay. EPA has mandated that we clean up the 64,000 acres within the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Just to do the math for you, that's just north of 41 million acres. Our task is part of the 47 districts statewide within the Bay Area. The Chesapeake Bay model says that we have to have at least one best management practice placed on all of the, on 90% of the agricultural acres within the Bay watershed. And of course, that's West Virginia, New York, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Washington, DC, State of Virginia, and parts of Delaware and Maryland. How many acres that equates to? My best guess is about 8 million acres. So, we have to have boots on the ground within this watershed to get to 8 million acres. How many farmers that is? I don't know. It's 27, 28,000 in the Bay watershed here in Virginia. So, we have a dawning task ahead of us. I think Mr. Vaughn is the only one still on the board, but about 25 years ago, we had a meeting at Slough's, and we talked to you about the watershed implementation plan in its early stages. And while the percentage of what Piedmont and Notaway County has to do is very low, when you have eight or nine or 41 million acres, whatever you look at, every acre counts. So, that's what we're trying to do. And if you look through, we've worked with 146 different producers. 16 miles of stream have been fenced out with the cattle. We do a lot of things with non-point source pollution. For those of you that don't quite understand non-point source, that's anything that does not come out of a pipe. If it comes out of a pipe, that's going to be stormwater, or DEQ is going to manage that point source pollution, and that can be a sewage treatment plant or an industry of some kind. Within the watershed implementation plan, all of the point source, all of the non-point source, all of the residential development, even homeowners have to make a reduction of some kind. To that end, if you look, if you look in, over in the annual report, you'll see that we have a residential septic tank program. We spent over $100,000 last year in the Flat Creek and Spring Creek watersheds. It does include part of Notaway County, but it would be on the northern portion. But anything that dumps into Deep Creek or Sailor's Creek are the watersheds that we can work in. DEQ has that grant money. We were so successful, we learned last month at our Piedmont meeting, we had received an additional $157,000. So, we're pretty proud of that because our staff up there is top-notch. I couldn't, I won't go through, they're listed in your. I couldn't, I won't go through, they're listed in your annual report, so anyway, you can take a look at them, but they're top-notch. Some of the things on the horizon, we're looking at solar ourselves, not because we have anything to do with an ordinance that any one of the three counties puts together, but because of the potential runoff on off-site landowners. I spoke to you all in December as an individual about solar farms. Our state meeting coming up, we will be looking at the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which we believe inadvertently sacrifices forest land for solar farms. So we've kind of got our priorities out of order, and so we're going to take a look at that and discuss it at our annual meeting. What will happen there? Nothing legislatively, but we will be looking at it and make a recommendation if we're asked to. One of our directors on the planning commission in Amelia told us at our last meeting that one-sixth of the energy needs in the state of Virginia goes for internet farms, nothing but servers, and they're all located in the Northern Virginia corridor. And being from Amelia, he just quipped out, he said, "Why don't they put all the solar farms in Northern Virginia where they need the power?", which I agreed with. That'll never happen, but it's always fun to think about it. One last highlight I'll bring to you, the Environmental Teacher of the Year this year is from Piedmont. It's the Ag teacher from Amelia, Margaret Jones. She will be recognized in just a couple of weeks up at our annual meeting, and I can stand here and talk and answer questions about the Chesapeake Bay watershed, the watershed implementation plan, how we got started, and the model, and the complexity of it, if you're willing to listen. So if you have any questions, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Rash?
I do, I just, a quick comment. Number one, Mr. Rash, thank you for what you do. Obviously, volunteering is huge regardless if it's an elected position or, you know, what, a fire emergency service. And Madam Chair, I would like to ask for, if they're willing to come back with that recommendation, I think we ought to listen. You know, once we get a little bit deeper in the soul and y'all finish what you were talking about, your discussion?
It won't be a recommendation that Piedmont could actually put forth. It's actually going into our policy book.
Okay.
Where if something comes along and we think it needs attention at the state level, and I don't have to tell you guys, but things come up in the legislature that catch you flat-footed and blindsided, we just felt that having a policy would alleviate some of the stress of having to have the board meet and come up with something and react. And things happen so fast now with electronic technology in Richmond, we just felt it was best to have a policy. But the draft is very benign, very generic. It doesn't support solar farms, it doesn't oppose solar farms. We just want to make sure that the nexus between sacrificing farms and woodland is done appropriately and make sure that all of the circumstances, the mitigating circumstances with off-site runoff are dealt with. And there are numerous episodes in central Virginia where runoff has decimated adjoining landowners. So that's where our focus will be, is the adjoining landowners. It's all a commercial industrial site. We won't have anything to do with it, but we can help locate if anybody has any questions. And certainly, if adjoining landowners have any questions, please come see us.
Thank you.
PiedmontSWCD.com.
Thank you, Mr. Rash.
Come see us. We'll see you next week maybe.
All right. Next presentation, Mr. Hyde, Public Safety Communication System Date.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Costin, staff, citizens, good evening. This is an exciting night. We've got several things on the agenda tonight that deal with our men and women in first response agencies, fire, EMS, and police. And before I get started, real quick, I'd like to have the fire, EMS, and police that are present tonight just stand up for a moment, that are in attendance. Thank you. We appreciate every one of you, and they're out here every day without hesitation, you know, taking care of our citizens of Nottaway County. Hope I don't leave anybody out, but Blackstone Volunteer Fire Department, Crew Volunteer Fire Department, Burkeville Volunteer Fire and EMS, we have Blackstone Police Department, Crew Police Department, Burkeville Police Department, and then, of course, Nottaway Emergency Squad for EMS. And let's not forget our friends at Fort Pickett Fire Rescue that also handle fire and EMS. With that said, the needs assessment, which is phase one of the radio communications that we've been talking about, the system project began in March of 2022. It recently concluded during the summer of this year. This extensive data collection process involved many stakeholders, the ones you just saw standing up as well as others, especially the end-users of the public safety radio components, as these men and women do every day with the push-to-talk button on the radio. During the needs assessment period, it's interesting to note, the CTA consultants that held our interviews and our needs assessment, they had 14 interviews with stakeholders and conducted surveys at 12 of the existing radio tower sites around the county. They also held three in-person group meetings with public safety radio users and five meetings with us and county staff, using all in-person and virtual formats for these meetings. All of these meetings were beneficial to properly editing the documentation while providing questions and answer opportunities for all of the individuals in our fire and EMS and law enforcement agencies, as well as any other stakeholders. Also, they worked through the whole needs assessment data exchange in this manner. And all of this was done again since March, so now we have reached that point tonight. At this time, CTA consultants will be presenting a summary of the needs assessment to all of you. The full report was sent to you under separate cover on November the 9th by Mr. Costin. And without any further ado, please welcome Cheryl Jiggetz of CTA Consultants and her team for this informative presentation.
Thank you. Jiggetz?
Thank you so much, and I appreciate you allowing me to talk with you. And the report did end up being a couple hundred pages, but we're not going to do all that tonight, right? We're going to go for the short version, if that's all right with you. What I like to always start with is what were the project goals? You know, why are we doing this and what are we hoping to accomplish? So our goal here was really to investigate and look at all the possible opportunities and alternatives you might have in looking for a new system. And what we're trying to do here is improve operability. We need a system that works for us dependably and reliably all the time. We also need to improve interoperability. We need to talk with those around us because they help us and we help them. And create redundancies. We know after that ice storm when our system wasn't working, we need to have things in place so if something does break or go wrong, or we have some sort of natural disaster, we can recover quickly. Realize operational efficiencies. We want to make sure that people on the street are able to use the radio quickly and easily, but also, we want to make sure that we're not overburdening our dispatchers because that's a very finite resource that we have. And of course, realize cost savings. These are not inexpensive systems, we understand that, so we want to be really as frugal with your citizens' dollars as we can be. So what did we do? We looked at some alternatives, and we have some considerations that we look for as we go through that. And those considerations are developed by really some of the accomplishments we did. And Buddy already mentioned that, we interviewed a dozen different, over a dozen different people and agencies. We also looked at a dozen sites. And those are not just the ones you're using today, but we wanted to look at all the sites here in your county because we could use any number of them looking forward. And so all of that really allowed us to capture our alternatives and attributes. And the attributes are the things that your people say are really important to them in a system that they believe will work well. And that really helps us as we go forward and judge what alternative might be best for you. And then we do a technology review because we've got to figure out there's a number of different technologies we can look at. We have to look at frequencies, you know, what's available to you. Then we have to do traffic loading. What we like to do when we do our assessments is not only plan for today, whenever you put a new system in, but we want the system to be able to live for you for the next 15 to 20 years. So we look at everybody who needs the system today, but also who might want to join you in the future. Might it be schools, public works, anyone else that might want to come on your system? So we do that traffic loading with that in mind. We also do coverage analysis. We've got to make sure that we can cover your entire service area. And then also backhaul, we have to connect our sites, so we look at that very carefully. And then that technology review and the alternatives analysis come next. One of the things that we found out when we talked to your people in doing our assessment is what are some of the issues they're having today? Because it's really important that we know and understand those issues so that we could address them for the future and hopefully not have those issues in the future. One of the big things we heard was the lack of redundancy. And I think that's particularly poignant because if a piece of your system goes down and they don't have, you know, service for hours or days, that really sticks in their minds that they couldn't get to the dispatch when they needed to. So we heard that quite often. Also, lack of coverage. And in your presentation, you see that we put a little map over to the right, and that really shows the areas that people indicated that they could not talk. Either they could not talk and be heard by dispatch, or when dispatch was trying to relay information to them, they could not hear. And it's important for us to remember that, right? We need two-way communication, so both sides have to be able to hear. And that coverage is not just mobile and portable, but also in buildings. And we're finding that to be more and more the case, which is one of the reasons that we have now gone a little bit further than just designing to mobile coverage. We now designed a portable on the street because our people get out of their vehicles and they need to be able to talk wherever they are serving you. Lack of interoperability came up a lot, so we know that they need to talk to their neighbors, so we've got to address that. And then operating on disparate radio systems, that really speaks to the lack of operability within your county. You know, interoperability, we look outside of your county, but that whole operability is, I can't, fire can't talk to police, a sheriff's deputy cannot talk to a police officer. That's the kind of operability we need to have here in our county. And then our equipment is really at end of life. You guys have done a really great job of fixing things when they break. You know, eBay can only take us so far, and we have been able to get some pieces and parts, but they're just no longer there for us. So if we can't fix our equipment, it's now time to move in a new direction. So what are some of the alternatives that we found? Well, obviously, do nothing is always an alternative, which we choose not to talk about any further at this point. We know we need to do something. So we also looked at a 7-800 P-25 conventional radio system, and P-25 is our new standards-based system, and that's important for you to know because really what we want to do to be interoperable with those around us is to build towards a standard, and that's what P-25 is. And you'll also hear me mention that later on, that's where we can get grant money, adopting a P-25 standard. So that's why it's so critical. So we looked at a conventional system. We also looked at 7-800 Phase II trunk simulcast. And one of the reasons Phase II is important to us, it allows us to really increase our capacity exponentially, and that saves us on the frequency side of the house. And then we also looked at joining a neighboring system. We wanted to be mindful of the fact, you have some neighbors around you that are building new systems. Might we see cost savings if we were to join one of their systems? So those are the things that we looked at. And as we looked at those, again, we have to have foundations upon which we judge how well these alternatives can work for us. We looked at operability. So as you can see here, all the different agencies that need to talk within your county. We looked at interoperability, so all of your surrounding neighbors. But we also took into consideration state agencies. Of course, you would have to have memorandums of understanding with them, but we do want to give you the ability to talk with them if you can work those out. So some other considerations we had are now more on the technical side. We look at coverage and sites, what sites might work for us here in the county. And again, we're going to design towards portable outdoor coverage. And then channels and capacity, that speaks to the frequency. For our conventional system, we need to have six channel pairs, and for both of our trunk, we would only need four. So if you go to the next slide, what we like to do is just give you the broad strokes of how each of these alternatives fit into each of the considerations that I've just shared with you on the previous couple of slides. So as you can see, anything that's in green, if it was printed in color for you, that means that that alternative did really well against that particular consideration, whether it was operational or technical. So all of our alternatives did really well for the system functionality and reliability. These would all be P-25 systems, so we know they'll be reliable for us for the next 15 to 20 years. Each of them can use four sites, so that's good. Where we have a little bit of issue here is on that very first one, the conventional, it needs more frequencies. And frequencies is our real estate in the technical world here, so we have to make sure that we have enough frequencies to move forward. And what you've been allocated right now currently for 700 is five. So that kind of takes us out of that conventional area, which needs six. We only need four for the other two alternatives, and being we have five, that will fit nicely. All of the alternatives do well on the operability scale because it'll put you all on one system. So that means everyone will be able to talk to each other when they need to. Operational control, our first two alternatives, they would be standalone systems for you, conventional or trunk. You'll have really great operational control because they're your systems. Now, if you decide to join a neighbor, you lose a little bit of that operational control, right? Because it's their system, and you would have to work within the constraints of how they built their system. And then features. Our conventional systems really lack some of the features and functionality a lot of your users said that they would desire moving forward. Our standalone trunk system would give us all of the features. And again, if you're joining somebody else's system, you're a little bit encumbered, right, to what features they've purchased and implemented on their system. Just kind of wrapping up the alternative summary, we have interoperability. There's a lot of words there because we like to look at interoperability in many different ways. One, people coming into your county and you going out into their county, so we need to look at it in every way that we can. And you'll see really that both of the standalone systems, whether it's conventional or trunk, did really well for interoperability because we can build in all the gateways that you need. Where we find that we might have some challenges, if you join a neighboring system, it would just depend. It's a lot of unknowns. You'd have several different choices, and we're not sure how their system would be configured. So what we do is, we got those attributes from all of your users, and we stored all the technical alternatives against those attributes, we came up with a nice ranking and a score. We like to be very statistical because that kind of takes it out of the emotional arena and says, okay, statistically, this is our best alternative. And as you can see, the scoring, our 7-800 standalone P-25 trunk system did score the highest at 474, therefore, it is the top-ranked alternative. So based on that, we are recommending a standalone 7-800 P-25 Phase II trunk simulcast radio system. That is a mouthful, but really, what you need to think about is the best fit because it gives you the operability you need, the coverage that you need, and really, it's one that you can control the cost, not only initially, when you sign a contract, but also the ongoing cost. And it really does give you a great dispatch operational concept. It's going to allow your dispatch center, which you now have a new director, and it's going to start to grow, it's going to allow them the opportunity to be able to design the system with your users such that both sides of the house can really operate as efficiently and effectively as possible. And it gives us a lot of flexibility moving forward. So let's operate under the premise that we're moving forward with that particular recommendation. We went ahead and did a conceptual design for you. We do this for a couple of reasons. Number one, we need to make sure that we've given you an alternative that will work, right? So we need to do the engineering behind it to make certain of that. But also, you want a budget, and the only way I can create a budget is to do the engineering and figure out what all we need to make the system work for you. So we did a conceptual design for this Phase II trunk system in 7-800, and it is our opinion it will take four sites, and we have selected particular sites just to be able to do a design on, conceptually. We've also configured a microwave ring, and you'll see that all of your sites are connected in that graphic, and that's important to you because that builds in that redundancy. If any one of those links were to go down, it just turns around and goes back the other way. So really, you're not going to lose communication, even if you have a little bit of a hiccup due to weather or anything of that nature, which is really builds that redundancy. Now, your dispatch, we've configured the primary dispatch at the sheriff's office, but we also feel like it's going to be good for you to have a physical backup over at Blackstone Police. That way, if anything were to happen over in this area, you had some sort of natural incident, you could then go over to the physical backup dispatch, and your dispatchers could operate just as if they were here at the sheriff's office. So that will really, again, give you that redundancy moving forward. So our next slide shows coverage. We did the engineering and did our coverage. We did our coverage based upon those four sites. We always like to share with you that when we put this RFP on the street, the vendors will be able to pick whatever sites they choose, which is why we went to so many sites, right? We went to a dozen sites, we only picked four because that's all we need. Now, each proposer has their own technology to bring to bear. We will require them to meet a coverage guarantee. Now, for us to make them give us a coverage guarantee, they have to have the latitude to pick whichever sites they choose. So we'd just like for you to be mindful of it. When we get proposals back, it may not be exactly these four sites, but what you want is not specific sites, you want guaranteed coverage. That means if we test it on the backend and they don't meet that coverage, they will have to do whatever it takes to bring you up to that guaranteed coverage level. And you will see here, our mobile coverage is quite wonderful, all throughout the entire service area, which is your county. service area, which is your county borders. Are portable, looks really good as well. And I do like to point out that where you say white, the green is the coverage. Where you say white, that does not mean you have no coverage. That just means that our computer model couldn't say it could guarantee that you were reaching a particular level. We often find, typically, we'll design towards 95% on-the-street coverage, that's public safety grade. That's likely what we'll request in our RFP out to the proposers. What'll happen is when they come back with that 95, usually when we test it, you usually get like 97, 98. So we know that you're going to get more, and they have to be a little bit conservative. So I think we've got really great coverage for you here. Now, the next slide, we want to speak for just a moment on paging. We know how critically important that is, really for all of our fire and EMS agencies. And you have a wonderful and robust volunteer, and we want to make sure that they continue to be able to support you. And to do that, they have to get their communications as well. So what we are recommending is that we integrate paging into our 700 system. And what this is going to do really is improve the paging coverage footprint. It's also going to give them better in-building coverage and eliminate maintaining two different systems. We have talked with our fire and EMS personnel, and we have told them, if they wish us to also ask for an alternative in the RFP for keeping your paging system where it, where it is, we could do that. And what you're going to see then is just a comparison of what the benefit versus the cost. All right. So conceptual timeline. We always feel like it's important that you understand, how do we get to the end, right? We want this system up and operational so people can use it. Let's presume for a moment, we can complete an RFP by the end of this year and release it either December or January, which is a little aggressive, but not terribly unrealistic. It could be done. That would then likely get you proposals at the end of first quarter next year, the March-April timeframe. And I would think you could have a contract signed by June. I will say, end of a quarter is always a great time to be negotiating a contract with a vendor because they want to close it, especially at the end of a half-year. So that would be a really great time for you to be negotiating a contract. Were that the case, we really feel like you could be up and operational on a new system by the end of 2024. So that'd be about an 18-month implementation timeframe. Budget. Dollar's always the important thing. What we've done in this budget is broken it down by different components that you'll need for the system. And when you see the report, and we did share a report that, like I said, a couple hundred pages, we give you a lot more detail in there. We like to give you three views of that cost. One is a list cost, so let's presume you could come up with every piece and component that goes in this system, and you just picked a vendor, and you went into their catalog, and you got all the prices together. It'd probably run about $10 million. Now, the next step we could think about is, well, what if you were joining that neighboring system, right? And you wanted to negotiate? If you join a neighboring system, you're going to be compelled to go with their vendor, at least for the infrastructure. You could potentially go to multiple vendors for the subscriber equipment, but you're really compelled to negotiate competitively with their vendor for infrastructure. So we're thinking if you tried to do something like that, maybe around $9 million. If we put a competitive RFP out on the street, we really feel like we can get it in at that $7 million mark, 7.2. And I will tell you, we work extremely hard to negotiate that down as much as we possibly can, to really get you as much as we can for the dollars that you will be spending. So based on all of this, we are recommending that we move forward with the 7-800 P-25 Phase II trunk simulcast system. And if we do that, it's going to simplify your communications, so your people on the street will have this tool that will benefit them and not be difficult for them. It's really going to give them the ability to communicate as they need to. You know, interoperability is important. That doesn't mean everybody needs to talk to everyone else all the time, but when that critical incident happens and they need to talk to each other, they will be able to do so. And then it's going to be a consistently dependable system. How nice will that be, when somebody be able to go out on the street and not worry when they pick up that radio if it's actually going to work? So, that being said, we do know it's a lot of money, and we do let you know that we will continue to support you on grants because there are grants out there. You know, there's a number of federal grants, state grants, private, and even some locally. We've worked with Buddy in the past to, to move forward and try to help him with grants, and we will continue to support you in that. And that's another reason, I will tell you, that as we look at this go-forward plan of action, that middle bullet, the adopting the P-25 technology, is critically important because that will, in turn, support your grant submissions. We need to initiate planning and budgeting for your new system. We need to be mindful that as you move forward between now and the end of 2024, if your users need to purchase pagers, if they need to purchase any mobile radios for new vehicles or subscribers, we need to make sure that they're P-25 capable. What we don't want you to do is have any sunk cost, right? Let's not buy something that we can't use tomorrow, so let's be mindful of that. And then prepare the competitive request for proposal. We're already working on that. And like I said, if we work really hard, that can be our Christmas present to you, put that out on the street. And then we need to license our 700 frequencies. We know they're allocated to you, but I will tell you, these frequencies have been allocated for quite a few years, and at some point, the state's going to say, okay, they're going to go back in a general pool. So we do recommend that you move forward with licensing. So we encourage you to really think about the, the fact that now really is the best time for you to move forward with this system so that we can keep our public safety people safe as they keep us safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Good. All right, we'll move on. Ms. Tomer, you're going to, Assistant County Administrator Tomer, provide us with a, a report on Virginia Women's Municipal Leadership Institute. Congratulations on your completion.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm happy to be back in front of y'all. I hope at least one of you missed me. If you didn't, let me think you did. Next week's Thanksgiving, and I just, I guess I feel compelled to, to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be absent the last eight months to attend this institute. It was career-changing for me. I've always heard the term professional development, and it was kind of absent for some of us around here for a long time. And you've all believe in it, and we believe in it now too, and I appreciate that. Y'all know me, I'm not boastful, I don't talk about myself, I don't like being the center of attention. Tonight is no different. What I would like to do is, is share just a few details about the institute. Because the two ladies that led this thing, they're passionate, this, this is what they live for. So I want it to be known, they did an amazing job. The institute was a partnership between Virginia Women Leading Government and Virginia Tech with the intentions or the hopes of narrowing the margin of the number of women working in local government as opposed to the number of men. And I believe when, when we finished the institute, that total was 16% women versus men. This program allowed this, this otherwise group of random strangers to come together. We joined forces, we educated each other, we listened, we talked, we, there was a gentleman that was a Virginia Tech staff member, and he was in there every time. Bless his heart, he was the only man in there. And I had to, I had to tell him when it was over with how much I appreciated the fact that he sat in the back of the room while we essentially man-bashed for eight months. And he looked at me and said, you know what? I need to change too. So it was beneficial to him. The, the program allowed us to delve into issues such as leadership fundamentals for frontline supervisors, leading practices in budget and finance, wonderful knowledge refresh of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, social media, how it impacts today's workforce, and diversion equity and inclusion. That's just to name a few. That obviously wasn't each, each, I mean, the only ones. There was even a session on public speaking, and I'm starting to question whether I gained anything from that because it's very nerve-wracking still standing up here. The cohort of ladies that I was with, they were just brilliant. They, they were, they were just brilliant and capable, and I can't say enough about them. They, they represented geographically a large portion of Virginia, from as far west counties like Bartlett, Albert Marlin Halifax, to as far east as the cities of Norfolk and Newport News. They, they ranged in title from Director of Parks and Rec and Fire Planning Analyst to Assistant County Administrator and Deputy City Treasurer. I, I was in complete awe of these women, and, and even had a moment in one of the sessions to, to share with two of the ladies that I want to be you when I grow up. I was that impressed and blown away by these ladies. You know, I've gained a, a new circle of, of professional contacts, a new circle of friends. Like I said, it was life-changing for me. When the institute began, Bonnie Zverchek provided us a directory of what she labeled as wise women. These women offered to serve as, as a resource, an ear, a shoulder, anything they could offer, expertise, experience. And when I saw that, I was really excited because Lunenburg County Administrator Tracy G was, was a part of that. And she's always been willing to help me in Nottoway County on anything. The, as I said, the, the institute provided a safe environment, for lack of a better term, for these women to share their stories. We're talking not only sexism, racism, ageism, I mean, it was, it was unbelievable. And, and if it, it surprised me, I don't know if it would you, but there was even one of the ladies that experienced all three from a former employer. So there's, I, I can't, I was mortified, if I'm being honest, by some of their stories. It was, they were, some of them were accused of being insubordinate because they stood up for themselves, the way they were being treated. You know, they were hired over on the, the basis of race, religion, color. I mean, it, it was just, it was heartbreaking. This institute was started, and like I said, these ladies were passionate, they did it hoping to, hoping to change the future. I know they changed 24 of us. I believe in it. I believe in them. I believe in what they, what they're trying to do. The institute was made possible, I feel like I need to say this, the institute was made possible by very generous donations, by a great deal of both government agencies and corporations, businesses. Davenport, who we work with, is, is one of the sponsors. UVA's Institute of Government, which I believe trains, well, the Cooper Center, trained some of our constitutional officers, and even Sam Anderson. And on the day of the graduation, there was a sponsor luncheon, and everyone that sponsored this was present, except for one. And Sam Anderson wasn't able to have someone there at the reception. So Mr. Costin and I asked the, the institute lead if we could bring that certificate back so that I could personally thank Sam Anderson for their contribution and, and their effort in changing lives, because did. So please, Mr. Rick Roberts, take my appreciation back to Richmond with you and share that I appreciate that. And if I can take up one more minute of your time. I want to say thank you as well for allowing me to attend the VACO conference this time. People have their own opinions, that's fine. I got to see firsthand how beneficial it was. And I, I met people, I saw things, I heard things. You know, I got to attend one of the breakout sessions where they were talking about fiscal year 24 state budget projections. I mean, we're fixing to start the budget. It, it was just, oh, okay, well, we need to know that. So I'm so appreciative, again, the investment that you're putting into us as your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proud of you, Katie.
All right, we're going to move on to department reports. Ms. Bryant, here this evening. Diana Bryant, Assistant Residency Administrator, Virginia Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Costin. I wanted to update you on a few projects that we have still ongoing. The Route 46 Bridge, there's no new update on that, but we're still expecting steel delivery, hopefully in December. So the project should be short, starting shortly after that. The Route 460 Bridge, right out here, we were hoping for November completion, but that looks like it might move into December. They ran into a little bit of an issue, but I think they can quickly work through it, but it's, it's still going to push us into December. Signal work at Route 49 and 460, that got pushed back a little bit because contractor that was supposed to come to locate the footers got tied up on another job, so he was late. But that's still going to be ongoing. We still have the new sign installations ongoing and on Route 460 throughout the county. Our state forces, you've probably seen them out there do on our final mow. That's the entire right-of-way to right-of-way mow, where we mow the entire median and out to the right-ofways on, on both sides. The, the center of the median and, and the outsides are not mowed during the summer because that's part of the pollinator program. So the third mow, the final mow of the season, that's when we mow all of that. We've been performing a lot of brush trimming on our secondary routes. This safety study that was requested by Mr. Rourke for East Courthouse, it's actually going to start the residency review tomorrow. So as soon as we have something on that, we will provide that to you. And the sign installations that were requested for Route 307 for the creek crossings, we've ordered those signs, but there's a lot of emergency vehicle postings that we're doing throughout our residency. So when we get finished with those, then we'll move on to the creek crossing postings. And that is all of the additional information that I had over the report that's in your packet. So if you have anything for me?
Anything for Ms. Bryant?
I do not.
No. I did want to let you know too, on 619, I don't know if you all have noticed, there's several areas that it looks like black spray has been put out there. It covered some of the reflectors, it covered some of the lines. We don't know how that happened. The construction manager, the contractor that completed the project, nobody knows how that happened. So I have had a lot of public inquiries on that, so I just wanted to let you know, we have tried to investigate it, but we don't know what happened there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody from the school board this evening? Mr. Hyde, did you have any? Is Mr. Hyde still here? Yeah, anything further on your report in the package? Did you need to comment on anything?
Yes, ma'am, if I could, just for a moment, on the, on the monthly report. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Costin, once again, my monthly report is, is included in your package, and I'd like to just highlight a few items to elaborate on what you have in front of you. The, you know, obviously, when I came on board, we had several plans to write, and we still have several more after those are written. But I'm happy to report tonight that we have completion on the cybersecurity emergency plan, and it was tested on tabletop exercise on October 14th. At a Berkle Elementary, we had a session out there, and we had the registrar there, as well as Mr. Costin, Sheriff Jones, Ms. Lauren Brown from the Emergency Communications Center, Ms. Tomer, myself, and that's our communications team, pretty much. And we were able to, you know, test it, and then we followed up with final revisions and completion of this written plan. So that was one plan down. Of course, the hazard mitigation plan, you know, we've completed all of that. We're waiting on CDC to, you know, finalize that, and that's online now. You can take a look at it, and I think you're aware of that. The second bullet is monitoring and planning for a tropical storm to cold. It started off as a hurricane, obviously, then it downgraded to a tropical storm, then it downgraded when it hit Virginia to a, what we call a tropical cyclone today. And by that time, it was up around Roanoke and running about 35 miles per hour winds. So we dodged another one, but the, the good news is, through state conference calls and discussions for planning locally, we were in the same mow we were in with Ian and any other previous event. So we were lucky that Nottoway dodged it, but we also were able to get out a lot of notifications, as well as media. As, you know, we have Billy here tonight, and all of the media, I can hit one button and go to all at one time, all three papers, and then we have the Bobcat Radio and some others. And so, you know, we add all of them on to our existing 72-person committee, or not committee, but a email group. We have about 72 key decision-makers in the county that we notify at one time. Continued work on meetings for the EOP, and just want to update you real quick on that. So the EOP is moving along very well, and we're almost at completion, but we were slightly delayed this month. I think in the last packet, I mentioned that we would try to vote on it this month. We're delayed because we had unexpected tasks at the EOC. So we've got a lot of things going at one time, a lot of balls being juggled. But the EOC had some unexpected tasks to take care of, as well as this communication project that you heard tonight. So we just needed to move that to the front burner. We will, we will be getting back on the EOP as soon as tonight, after, after the presentation. The EOC construction, it's important to note that we are looking at December. We feel pretty confident if the vendors don't have any delays. What we found was moisture in the floor, so we were, we were pretty much finished with the walls. The walls up, they looked really good, they The audio visual is mounted, that looks really good. We have one more component to mount on the wall, maybe two, and then we have a flooring to replace. So, where we are now is we're getting quotes this week and next week on quoting the floor covering. And as soon as we can put that in and look at a dehumidifier for the building, because we have a moisture issue there, then that will move right along. And last, as far as just updates, the faith-based class that we talked about for a couple months at Berkeley Elementary, that was for deploying faith-based organizations in a disaster, that had a really good turnout of 23 people. So, I just wanted to report that out to you. And it went well, and primarily, most of the attendees were from Notaway County. And we did have a few from Prince Edward and some other localities. So, with that, that completes my report. I am available for questions, and I believe we're going to talk again in a few minutes under the unfinished business.
Any questions for Mr. Hyde?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you.
Mr. Zodi, Greg Zodi, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. Good evening. First, I would also like to echo Mrs. Tomer's comments about supporting staff with conferences and continuing education. I recently attended the Rural Planning Caucus, and I think that's one of the best outlets to share information, learn lessons, and hear from state officials. This year, we had a few items that I think are going to impact us. The agritourism event spaces for wineries are going to relook at the Winery Act and whatnot, and also how the buildings are set up. And so, that will involve myself and Mr. Lewis, our building official, because it's, if you don't have an inspection and don't have an ensure, there's a serious liability. So, that's one thing. I also spoke to a representative from the Virginia Housing Authority about the potential of water grants for 2023, a planning grant to study the water, and that's through the Virginia Department's Health Office of Drinking Water. I think that could be very helpful. Secondly, I spoke with, that was Department of Health, and secondly, I spoke with Virginia Housing Authority, made a contact there, and there's an opportunity for them to provide us with marketing grants. And I think housing is one of our biggest issues. We really can't expand the industry if we don't have places to house people. So, I think that's one big consideration. Really, the other thing is, and I want to keep my report short, was that he's going to come out with some marketing, and I include that for you all. And we'll be posting those, the marketing outreach campaign on our website, notaway.org. We can put that on the planning page, and I've already spoken with my colleague Susan Tucker about that. That's really what I had for you all. I did discover with the weatherization upstairs in the windows that there was some, I don't know if treasure trove is the correct term, but I did find a lot of Economic Development Committee boxes that I did not know exist. So, right now, I'm going through those, and at the same time, I'm also reviewing and editing the Economic Development Committee handbook for '21 to '22. So, I hope that I can have a summary for you all next month. That's my goal, and to where we can make some recommendations and answer questions so I can get a better grasp of the purpose of that organization. Lastly, I would like to just say how, what an honor it is to work with Ms. Tomer. She's been excellent, and I think you're kind of brilliant, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Zodi.
Madam Chair. If I may, Greg, can you come back to the microphone for a minute?
Yes, sir.
The box of treasure trove that he referred to, this is the handbook that he's referring to. And we have started to, Mr. Zodi and I have started to read through this and cut through this. We're having some discussions at the staff level, and as he indicated, we make a proposal that we might want to consider, and this is, I wish there was something like this for every topic in Notaway County. It gave me a tremendous history of what's happened and why it's happened. But apparently, prior to a committee, there was actually a commission. There was staff, there was a lack of staff, interaction with staff and the board, so some changes were made. Found some really good material in here, some of which is interesting. Have some things that I agree with, such as, it gives an explanation of why you go into closed sessions, and it's not always about protecting the county. It's also protecting the interest of the person who's interested in doing business in the county. And then there was a statement in here that I found somewhat disturbing. Contrary to popular perception, quality of life issues in school system issues are not near the top of the list of prospective businesses. That's not true. That's very much a factor for businesses. So, there's some work to be done on this, but, you know, pulling out my English background, it's a lot better to start with words on a page than a blank sheet of paper. So, we've got a little bit of a start. We've been doing some work, and we may be presenting to you the concept of an economic development authority as opposed to a commission, committee, or a commission. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Madam Chair, I would like to add, I would like to pursue the two grants, the drinking water, the planning grant from the Office of Drinking Water, as well as the housing marketing strategy. I'll bring more detailed information to you all next month. I think they're worthy of pursuit. So, I just want to let you all know that, just heads up. Thank you.
Do you have any other department representatives here with any reports? All right, we'll move on constitutional officers, reports, and comments. Ms. Hudson, you might be the only one we have here.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board.
Good evening.
Mr. Costin. First, I want to thank you guys for putting the ordinance through from my office and Ellen's office. It's going to make it a lot easier. All right, personal property. Where do I start? It has been one heck of a tax year. I don't know how many times in a week we get asked, what is the form everyone is talking about? I didn't receive one. Why do we need to turn the form in? Why do you send the form out? Don't you already have this information from DMV? I marked a vehicle sold, but you still taxed me for it. I'm not wasting my time sending the form back. Oh, that's what the form is for. I threw it away. You are just wasting taxpayers' money by sending the form out. Don't get me wrong, there are a lot of taxpayers that appreciate it, but for the others, I hear you. I understand. So, tonight, I'm here to ask for a change. Code of Virginia 58.13518 requires that every taxpayer owning personal property subject to taxation to file an annual return with my office. The next code, 58.13518.1, is an alternative method of filing returns from motor vehicles, trailers, and boats that would, and that would be called file by exception, but that would require an ordinance. I have reached out to other commissioners, and every one of them speaks highly of this. They love it. They said they'll never go back to the paper forms. I've had a few cons come back, but I don't even consider them cons. One was that I would need to make informed, better informed notes in the screens, and the taxpayers still call about the forms. In this one county, they hadn't done the forms in like 15 years, and taxpayers are still calling. And then, if they don't update the DMV, you know, then they would see the vehicles on their form prior to the tax bills going out. Same county said they don't believe their abatements are any different in volume. The only thing that differed was some counties still assessed the late file penalty, and others did away with it altogether. One county even said they completed the personal property books two months sooner than they normally did. As long as each taxpayer updates their DMV record timely as directed by law, then the tax bill should not have items on it that have been sold or disposed of. This is something we already preach to the taxpayers that have not updated their information in DMV. We have quite a few abatements that are done for that reason. The taxpayer did not update their DMV information, or they updated the information in the year that we are assessing. My office has the capability to update the garage jurisdiction for the taxpayer per their request and prove that they have moved, but they would still need to contact DMV to update their mailing address. When we upload from DMV, the information is pulled by the garage jurisdiction as of January 1. If all information is correct in DMV, then my office will have the correct information. We also inform taxpayers that taking the tags off does not excuse them from a bill. If the vehicle is titled to the taxpayer, they get a bill. My office will continue to educate them about the importance of updating their DMV record. If they do not return the form by May 1st, then the code said, you know, the code 58.13519 says that the commissioner of revenue shall, from the best information we have, enter the fair market value of such property and assess the same as if it had been reported to us by the due date. We already do this now for the ones that don't return the form. The taxpayer would still need to contact the office if there are any changes that would affect their assessment, if there is a change in address or a change in the situs of the vehicle, to notify us when they get rid of a vehicle. They could do this anytime. Now, we tell them to wait until after January the 1st. And again, if they have updated their information before January 1, we will already have this information. They would still need to contact to update their mileage, because they can still get their mileage discount. Now, my office would still be required to send out personal property forms to any business, any business that has machinery and tools, anybody who owns a single wide mobile home or aircraft. So, in your packet, I have given you the amounts that we spent for the last four years on the 762 forms. The amount covers data processing, printing, and mailing the forms. BMS mailed 10,142 envelopes with forms for '22. We have 974 items that would still require a form to be mailed. I have a quote for an estimate of 980 forms being mailed for $850. The quote is also in your packet. Eliminating the forms will cut down on cost. The taxpayer will not be penalized for not returning the form, less paper to keep in the file cabinet for the six years that we are required to keep them, less time spent on filing, and more time spent on other task on our desk. Now, the county will lose some money that's generated from the late file penalty, but I feel like the county would be able to make that up over, you know, not long period of time. You know, times are tough for all of us, and I have learned that my office and you, the board members, we can't make everybody happy. But this would be a step in the right direction. I ask that you please consider adopting an ordinance allowing us to go to file by exception and do away with all late file penalties for personal property, to include doing away with any late file penalties for the ones still required to file. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may. First of all, I want to say that last month, and I'm glad we had a chance to talk, I wanted it to be clear that it was never, the commissioner's office or her staff that I was questioning. There was never a performance issue there. When I said I wasn't going to pay those late fees, I was questioning, because you guys are the enforcers, and I was questioning what this county is capable of doing by ordinance, or if it was above us at a state, at a state level. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, this is number one, easier for citizens?
Yes.
It's a money saver for the citizens?
Yes.
And a lessen the workload on you and your staff?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Come here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. We need more of that for the citizens of Notaway County. And Madam Chair, I'd like to move to draft and for adoption an ordinance as outlined by the Commissioner of Revenue tonight.
All right, Mr. Rourke has made a motion. Does anybody wish to make a second?
I'll make a second, just to keep discussion going. So, because I thought we were in discussion, so I didn't realize you were going to put a motion on the floor.
Sorry.
That's all right. No, it's all right. So, I'm trying to get this thing wrapped around my head, Ms. Hudson, so, because this is, you know, change is change, and you've got to, when a change happens, I always hear things, this is a good change. And then sometimes we find later, it's not a good change. So, I don't jump into, I usually try to feel the world with my toes before I jump in it. So, all right, so if I got a vehicle, and I put so many miles on it, I go up to it, say, this year, last year was 110,000, now I got 161,000. To get a tax break for the vehicle to start losing its value, I'll have to go to DMV instead of sending it to you?
No.
No. Okay, I didn't understand that part. I can't get that wrapped around my head.
You would call my office to give us your mileage if it's over 100, and then once it gets to over 130,000, then once it's over 130, you don't have to let us know because you're going to get the same discount.
How is the citizen going to know that?
I'm going to have to put it out in the paper numerous weeks, put it on my Facebook page, word of mouth, I hope. We'll get it out there. But there's a lot of them that already know that.
Right.
That they get the mileage discount.
But if somebody moves to from another county, it is different.
We can adjust it. If they come in and to talk to us, and they didn't give us their mileage, we can give it to them.
All right. Go ahead, I'm sorry. When do you send these forms out?
In January.
In January.
Yes.
So, really, the people have five months?
They do. They do. And then if they don't send it in, they get that late file penalty.
So, there aren't any consequences if you take the filing fee off?
If we go to file by exception, right. Right. It would do away with all the late file penalty for it.
Let me ask another one, I just got to get this thing. All right, so the other thing that was change since I've been on this board, and it seems to be working, is the $25 decal fee is put with the, so, I'm trying to think of, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to be a person who's trying to get out of something.
Okay.
This shouldn't affect that at all, should it?
No, they'll still get the $25 license fee.
As long as, as long as they got the updated vehicle at DMV?
Yes. Because that's the citizen's responsibility. You know, if you move, you have, what is it, 30 days? I can't remember, but you have days to get it done.
Right. I got you.
And then we upload from DMV every year, so they give us all their information that they had as of January the 1st. So, as long as the taxpayer has correct information, then we will have the correct information.
Which is the same thing as whether they chose to send the paper in or not.
Correct.
The only difference here, the county is no longer carrying that cost to mail this out. You're looking at a difference of like $6,400 to $800.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And I understand, board members, my motion is to draft an ordinance for adoption, so...
You're not saying adopt it, you're saying...
Correct.
Because I got to chew, I got to talk to people. I got to...
Yeah, I was going to tell you, I'm glad you clarified that, because I'm not, the fact that I'm not, at this point, willing to vote in favor is just I need to absorb the information and think about it.
No, and I didn't expect that tonight.
Okay.
I'm just asking...
But you're just asking...
Correct. And that draft ordinance would give us all the pertinent information to make a decision, and with the draft ordinance would also be able to allow her to review a draft ordinance, or the staff could get with her when they draft that ordinance.
All right.
And if you have any questions, you know, I'm always available for it.
I think we would, we'd work together with the commissioner. I would, I'd start by asking her to reach out to some of her fellow commissioners and get copies of the ordinances, and we'll craft something. Of course, we'd run it by Mr. McRoberts.
So, just for procedural clarification, if we're not ready to vote on, if we vote against this tonight, can we reintroduce it at a time we've had a chance to give it more thought and gather more information, or...
Well, as I understand the motion, it's just to draft the ordinance.
Just to draft an ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Just to draft the ordinance, and then the future discussion will be... Just to draft the ordinance, and then the future discussion will be banked off of that draft. This is ordinance draft only. I think it moves...
Not even a public hearing, just the draft ordinance.
Right, right. Because you would have to have a public hearing, I believe, as well, before you can draft that ordinance, so...
Before you can adopt.
Adopt the ordinance, that's right.
You could look at a draft of something that you all could then decide you do or don't want to go to public hearing.
Right. And Madam Chair, the reason why I went ahead and made this in the form of a motion is because anything that we, I feel like anything that we put in a, if a motion is passed, then it, the citizens see that we're trying to move that forward, get all that pertinent information, and it also, it is a duly passed motion in itself.
We have, we have a 96% to 97% collection rate. You don't get much better than that. And I don't feel like this is broken at all. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Mr. Vaughn, I'm just trying to help the citizens.
It will take quite a bit of money away from the county. Everything I've heard recently we have done is to go into our coffers more and more, more and more. And sooner or later, it's going to come a point where we're going to have to start raising taxes.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Madam Chair, this was hard. Look, everybody just take a moment here, and I want you all to see what Steve Vaughn, what he's looking at his lenses right now, okay? So we, we had a, we had a, you had to file and fill out this form, and you got penalized if you didn't do like you're supposed to do.
And you have time to...
Now, we're going to change that, and everybody's going to do what they're supposed to do, and nobody gets penalized. Do you, if something's got to be missing here? Something's got to be missing. You see what I'm saying? I can't, not everybody's going to do what they're supposed to do.
No. Well, at this point, if we don't have the forms, they don't have to turn anything in. And if they don't call to say this, that, or the other, then they're going to get assessed at what we had as of January 1st. If they can't prove otherwise, they'll still get assessed at what we had January 1st. So it's nothing, the only thing that's changing is they're not going to get a paper form in the mail. And then they won't get assessed late file penalty. So that keeps money in their pocket.
Okay.
That's the only thing that's changing.
That's almost too good to be true.
If I may, to clarify, you're saying late filing penalty?
Late filing penalty.
If they pay late?
That's a different story.
That would be a different story.
Yet this is just the 10% late file that is assessed by my office. This has nothing to do with filing penalties, interest, or any of that. This is the late file penalty because they didn't turn that form in by May 1st.
All right, maybe that's what's getting me down.
Yeah, so we're just, I want to eliminate the form and the late file penalty.
Madam Chair, ma'am, one more. Ms. Hudson, in your memo, you list out below is the amount of late filing penalties that have been assessed for the last three years, '22, '21, '20. That's assessed, that doesn't necessarily mean collected.
No. But I can tell you for tax year '20, $118,617.05 was assessed for late file penalty. As of last week, the Treasurer's Office had only collected $93,349.99. That's in two years.
Of that amount.
Mm-hmm. For '21, it was $114,792.28 assessed. As of last week, $82,438.01 has been collected.
Madam Chairman, I see no harm in investigating it a little bit further because I think there's, that's a question of what might you be giving up in terms of actual collections on late fees as opposed to what's your cost savings? And if the cost savings are better than the loss, you know, the revenue side, obviously then you're coming out ahead, if you look at bottom line.
So I agree with the further investigation, but do we need an ordinance to do that?
No, you just direct staff to draft. You all, from what I understand from the motions, you simply want to see what a draft ordinance would look like.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'll stick with it. And Ms. Hudson, I hope you're not offended by, I'm trying to learn here, you know?
No, not at all. That's why you ask questions.
Madam Chair, I think this is a very important issue here, too. We, as, and I would say this, any government body should never be dependent on a late fee.
Exactly.
We should only be dependent upon reoccurring fees. So regardless of the $93 and the $82,000, I would say this, if it's gone, you can't count on it anyway. And who's paying it? The citizens in this broke county. I mean, let's just be honest.
John.
Mr. Vaughn...
All over the state, all over the Commonwealth, in towns, cities, there are fees attached if you don't meet the deadline. The banks, if you don't meet the deadline, and why can't you meet the deadline?
Mr. Vaughn, I'm basing my decision on the fact that a duly elected constitutional officer...
I know what you came in here with, John. I know what you came in here with last month. You're not going to pay. That's what you said.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay.
And I was speaking not just for myself, I was speaking for the citizens out there, too.
You were speaking for yourself.
No, you only speak for yourself. I know who I speak for.
All right, let's move along on this. So we've got a motion and a second on the floor. I think we've had enough discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vaughn, if you have any questions, come see me.
I will do that.
Okay.
Be happy to do it.
Y'all have a good night.
You, too. Thank you. Next to you.
Any other constitutional officers here this evening?
Madam Chairman, if I may, Ms. Waters is in training this week. She did send a communication to the Board, which I conveyed earlier under separate cover. It basically was a reiteration of her request and updated figures from last month regarding additional staff.
All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. First item under unfinished business, appointments to Social Services Board, to the Planning Commission, and to South Central Workforce Development Board. Mr. Costin, do you wish to speak to these appointments?
Yes, ma'am. As to the latter two, we're still waiting for some nominations. But as to the first one, Social Services Board, Mr. Ronald Scruggs, who has completed his first term as eligible for reappointment, the staff, including the Social Services Board, has recommended that he be reappointed. I know Mr. Rourke is on that board with him. He may have comments, but you have a suggested motion there before you regarding the reappointment of Mr. Ronald Scruggs.
Can I assume he's willing to serve?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion relating to the appointment of Mr. Scruggs to the Social Services Board?
Madam Chair, I'm going to let Mr. Rourke, so just a matter of transparency, Mr. Ronnie Scruggs is my brother-in-law, and Noel Shuckleton is the one who got him on there before, it wasn't me. And so I would, I'm going to yield to Mr. Rourke to make that motion if he wants to.
All right. Madam Chair, I move that Mr. Ronald Scruggs be appointed to the Social Services Board for a four-year term commenced in September 1, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The appointment of Mr. Scruggs as presented is approved. All right, Mr. Costin, anything about the appointment to the Planning Commission?
Again, we would be happy to take any nominations from the Board. We can talk to the folks, see if they're interested, give them some background information. But we have no names to present for these other two. And I do want to point out that the Workforce Development Board has criteria in terms of what they, what they seek. And I included the nomination form in your packet, and it has to fall into one of these multiple categories: private sector, education representative, economic development representative, VEC representative. There's different ones that have to fall, so...
That's for planning.
No, that's for the workforce.
Let's look at these individually, right? Let's look at the Planning Commission right here. Does anyone, are we ready to move forward with a nominee who's expressed an interest and understands the requirements, meets the requirements?
Madam Chair, on the Planning Commission, as soon as the redistricting is done, there's a gentleman that's in District 3 that will be in District 2 that is willing to take the appointment. And I believe we're probably not that far out to ask to defer until then. Because as soon as the redistricting is done, we can make that appointment he's willing to accept. Because it is a District 2 appoint.
At one time, Mr. Zodi, I don't know if it was you, or maybe I dreamt it, how that goes when you get old. I thought at one time we were talking about maybe looking at the numbers of Planning Commission that we have and maybe not reappoint until we get an idea of what we, what numbers we were talking about. Was that, did we have a short conversation? Was that a water fountain conversation or what?
Mine is weird because we have the same...
No, don't say that. Don't put that in the news, man. What is the normal, do you know, like, I mean, you know, committees, you get too many people in committee, it's hard to...
I've seen other counties, first and foremost, kind of, they were just theirs.
Mr. Zodi, could you come to the microphone, please?
I certainly could. I know a bunch of people that want to...
And don't touch the mic.
Oh, crap. But anyway, no, in Orange County, they originally had 10 Planning Commission members, and they cut it down to five because they only had a five-member board. And say Bedford County's seven on the Planning Commission, and that represents seven board members.
Okay, we got like, what, 14?
I think 12, potentially 14, I believe. And right now, we have 12, I mean, 12, I don't feel...
Yeah, you know, I just thought about maybe if we were going to make that change, we would do it through, I guess, nutrition or somehow, you know, I don't know how we would do it, but, because we got such a good Planning Commission group. But if, you know, if somebody didn't, wants to leave, you know, maybe we could take a look at that. I don't know. I want the Board to be aware of it. But I mean, they were good to go.
Mr. Vaughn, I recall, I made the suggestion that it was too large a group.
Yeah, I see.
We were also having, as we did this past week, having trouble getting with that many people. We didn't make more.
Right.
So we lost a month in the comprehensive planning process.
Well, a cold rainy night, though, you know?
That's true, but I have to say, it was not the first meeting that we haven't made more.
You're right.
All right, so we didn't have a nominee tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're going to come back to this.
That's correct.
All right, let's move on to South Central Workforce Development Board. Are we moved, are we ready to move forward with a nominee who's expressed an interest, understands, and meets requirements?
We have none at the staff level, Madam Chairman.
The director asked if I would serve, but I'd be up to this board to decide. I will serve.
Be willing to serve.
That's the Board's pleasure. We've not had any contact from their staff other than to say this is the nomination form, so...
The career?
From their folks.
Okay, so did I, did I hear you would be willing to do that?
I'll do that.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Vaughn. If he fits that criteria, it sounds like he might.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes for the appointment of Mr. Vaughn to the South Central Workforce Development Board. Next item under unfinished business, Cox Road Water Update. Mr. Costin, speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I apologize, the packet that you all were sent included only the attachments to the cover memo, but I got the cover memo out this afternoon to you all and into the press. Since April of 2021, there's been a great deal of activity concerning this issue of extending the water line along Cox Road. It's gone from the terminus of the line to the main entrance of Fort Pickett. Then there's been another version where that line was extended all the way out to the interchange. Many options have been looked at. There's been a lot of involvement with the citizens, with the town of Blackstone representatives who are here this evening. But one hesitation had been to try to factor this into long-term capital needs. The town of Blackstone had some issues that they needed to move on, and they moved on. So what the town is, what the staff is suggesting is to grant this evening permission to the town of Blackstone in accord with Virginia Code Section 15.22143 to extend that line when they are able to do so. That would be a line extension from its existing terminus out to the entrance to Fort Pickett, but not past that entrance. And that, that action would include to the town their determination of requiring, adjusting, or waiving connection fees, rates, or other construction or operational fees. Be happy to take any questions you all might have at this time.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion at this time.
All right, there's a suggested motion there in the package, Mr. Vaughn.
I move the town of Blackstone be granted permission to extend the Cox Road water line from its present terminus into Nottoway County along Cox Road, ending at a point in proximity to and not past the entrance to Fort Pickett pursuant to the Virginia Code Such permission to include the determination of requiring, adjusting, or waiving connection fees, rates, or other construction or operational fees.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. This is about time.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes as presented. Let's see. Next item on the agenda, Public Safety Communication System Action. Mr. Hyde?
Madam Chair, may I approach the bench to hand something to Mr. Costin?
Certainly.
Okay. Oh, all right.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Costin, again. Before I start with this short summary, asking for your action tonight, I would like to just mention that I did leave someone out a while ago, the Nottoway County Sheriff's Department. They were already standing. They stand anyway at these meetings. So when I was recognizing all the fire EMS and law enforcement, we have a wonderful Sheriff's Department, as you know, so we want to make sure, and they're at the table. Sheriff Jones and I sort of co-lead that project, and we, he's always at the table, and they're looking at for, you know, the folks in brown uniforms, making sure that the radio system works well for them, as well as all other law enforcement. Also, if I could, Madam Chair, I would like to just say, too, congratulate Katie Tomer for her accomplishment, to echo what some of the other colleagues have said. She's fantastic to work with, and this is great. Professional career development's always a win-win. So we enjoy working with each other, and I'll have to say that it's kind of cool for me that she actually grew up in a fire service family with fire and EMS. So that's, anytime we have a conversation about how to help fire and EMS in the community, she's right there. She's right there on the conversation. She understands, she totally gets it. With that said, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Costin, we appreciate your review of the final report that concludes Phase 1 of the project that you heard earlier from Ms. Jiggs, and ask for your consideration to accept said report and support the next step, which is writing the functional specifications to complete the Request for Proposals process, the RFP process. Representatives of CTA Consult... Representatives of CTA Consultants and I are available to provide additional information at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Hyde or CTA representatives?
Madam Chair, I don't know if now is the time to ask these questions, or, because it may be premature. I, I think our next step is what, we're just accepting the results, there's no commitment to anything moving forward, is that correct?
The, the suggested motion before you is to accept the results, but also to authorize forward movement to issue the RFP.
So, what are, what are the costs associated with the development issuance of the RFP?
I'll have to ask Ms. Jigges to explain that. We have it in phases, and I think we had a, provided a phase report, but it may be updated now. If you could, Ms. Jigges.
We don't change our fees. You've already supported RFPs, I think it's eighty-four or five for the RFP.
Okay. That's incorporated into our budget?
Yes, yes. And I would, if I could, Madam Chairman, just add, this is kind of like where you're at with the animal shelter, is that you're basically authorizing an RFP to get proposals back. You don't have to accept a one of those once they come back.
All right, well, then, Madam Chair, I have no additional questions here, these can be addressed at another time. I move the board of supervisors to accept the final report of the needs assessment for the Public Safety Communication System by CTA Consultants LLC in proceeding to the development and issuance of a request for proposals, RFP, to obtain project details and cost.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, yes, ma'am, that's good, just some clarification, because if we, if we could. So, just talking about some of the things that came out tonight, the four sites, you know, and this thing about, you know, I had to ask them one day, what does it mean? What are you talking about, in-building? Well, it's like that officer back there, if he's in a home or helping someone, he'd have to walk outside to talk because he can't talk to someone. And so, my question of the four sites, and maybe it was in there, and you have to excuse us, that, the thing was on the, that laptop was like this. So, I was looking, trying to understand it with my head tilted, so I apologize to you. He was laughing because I moved it, and then it went back the other way, and, you know, you know how he is. So, what percentage, like, if we, and see, this was hard for me to understand. Everything else that we're putting out for bid, you know, you mentioned it might be nine million, and we're hoping to get seven million. Everything else we're doing right now, everybody says, oh, man, it's up, prices are going up. And so, what I'm asking first is, what, what do you think is going to be the percentage of the county that will be covered with this new system? I mean, are we shooting for a hundred percent? Because, I mean, that's what I would like to shoot for, but that might be impossible, you know, I don't know.
It, it really is, because what we learned with, with engineering and physics.
Right, right.
Testing things on physics, which kind of bottles us to what we can do. We used to do ninety-five percent mobile sites in the vehicle, we now do portable on the street, but we're also going to define what we call in-building areas. So, that would be Crewe and Blackstone and Burksville. We're going to make sure that we've got more intense coverage in those areas where you do have the buildings. The other thing that we will do is we will have a list of critical buildings, your schools, the courthouse, places like that, that we're going to ask for more intense coverage. So, even though we designed to that ninety-five percent portable on the street.
Right, right.
We'll have areas that we ask for elevated coverage, and that's why we caution you not to think about just the four sites we selected. They may need to choose a tower a little bit further east to make sure they can get you that in-building coverage, right?
Uh-huh, I got you.
Each, each vendor does their technology just a little bit differently, and their propagation works a little bit differently, so we need to give them that freedom to pick the sites that they need, so they can give you that guaranteed coverage that you need.
Okay, and when we, this, when we get into other phases, but this might go to you, are we still going to get input from the, the agencies, the different representatives through here, I would continue, I hope?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, from day one, we, we've always said, all fire EMS, police, also, school bus garage, I believe, is, is involved, and Babs was also part of the interviews.
Oh, okay.
So, so all stakeholders, absolutely, yes, sir, Mr. Vaughn.
Right. One more thing, you mentioned it very end, you know, always, money, money, money. You said you will help us with grants and things like that. Do you see that there are some out there that may get us closer to, so we can, and I, and I have to be careful of that, we, grant money is our money.
Right.
You know, it's just federal side more so, or state. So, can you tell me, what are you thinking of that as a possibility?
Yeah, there is grant money, cop, the cops grant, which is something we've already put, put in for, so hopefully that might bring us a little bit at the federal level. We generally go every year after the State Homeland Security Grant. It's not big dollars, but every little bit helps as we move forward. The BRIC grant, which is a really big federal grant, that's kind of, we've seen maybe one client over the years be able to be successful in this particular January. Communications, for some reason, doesn't seem to be really high on a lot of the grants at the federal level, but we can do better at the state level. But we will certainly continue to support the federal.
Okay, got you. That's important to us right now, I think.
If I may, from my experiences back at VITIM, timing is everything. In post nine eleven, with the interoperability concerns that happened on nine eleven in New York, communication money became fast and furious. It really flowed.
Oh, it changed, okay.
So, now, if you weren't on that bandwagon, that bandwagon's gotten a lot shorter, so.
So, like broadband now is kind of the, the bandwagon, and communications then went off to the side somewhat.
It's the topic du jour, yeah.
But I will say, commissioning this report, I think, was a great first step, because of our clients that do generally are successful in getting federal grants is because they have a document like this to support it. So, this is what we'll use as our foundation for the grants we go after.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me that.
Sure, any further discussion? All right, we have the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the board accepts the final report of CTA needs assessment and authorizes proceeding with development and issuance of an RFP as noted. Okay, going on to new business. First item under new business, contract for general assessment of real property in Notaway County. Mr. Costin, you want to speak to this?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, members of the board, you just dealt with a big issue, this is another one. As you all know, every six years, at a minimum, localities have to submit their real estate for reassessment. That term comes up in twenty-three for Notaway. Been working very closely with the Commissioner of Revenue to craft a review of several proposals that were received through the CRC's effort to consolidate for all the counties. I've detailed throughout the past couple of months where we were in that process. Where we are tonight is you have a contract before you with the one remaining firm that's available to do this work for Notaway County in 2023 for the effective date of reassessment, which has to be January one of 2024. That is the firm of Pearson's Appraisal Service. I understand that's the same firm that you've, you've used before. So, you're probably familiar with Mr. Pearson, who's here this evening. But staff would certainly recommend to you the contract that's been presented to you. That contract has also been reviewed by legal staff, so you have a suggested motion. You might, however, want to take a moment and allow Mr. Pearson to make a few remarks, particularly if you don't mind, on what to expect in terms of reassessment rates.
And you, you look older, Ms. Pearson, don't you say anything about me?
Could you come to the mic? Thank you.
Later it gets older, I look, too. I'm Fred Pearson with Pearson's Appraisal Service. We've been doing assessment work for over forty years, as you can probably tell by my age, but anyway. When we do it, we try to be fair and equitable to all property owners. I've done it long enough that I listen to property owners. We do not make interior inspections of properties. When they come in, I try to find out what the interior of their home is like, and I try to listen to them and make sure they get a fair assessment. I try to explain the process to them, what sales we have available, and I listen. I listen to their concerns.
Any other questions for Mr. Pearson? Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair? I move under authority of Virginia Code Section 52.1-3280, the board of supervisors in Notaway County to proceed with the six-year reassessment of real estate and authorize the county administrator to execute the contract for reassessment services with Pearson Appraisal Services, Inc., before us this evening.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, contract with Pearson Appraisal Services approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, under new business, resolution for Responders' Safety Week. Mr. Hyde?
One more time for me. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Costin, you have in your package included, in your local board package, a resolution, a local resolution that aligns with the state resolution that designates November fourteenth through eighteenth this week, 2022, as National Crash Responders' Safety Week. We thought it would be good as a county, we believe that recognizing the importance of efficient traffic incident response and management is beneficial to Notaway County by bringing awareness to the community of the risks involved when our emergency response agencies are working at or near traffic crashes on the roads in our county. Please consider adopting the enclosed resolution. County staff will distribute a copy of the signed document to all emergency response agencies in our county.
Any questions for Mr. Hyde? All right, do we have a motion to adopt and distribute the resolution as presented by Mr. Hyde?
I move to adopt as presented, the resolution and support of National Crash Responders' Safety Week, and direct staff to distribute a copy of said resolution to all emergency response agencies in Notaway County.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to consent items. Ms. Tomer or Mr. Costin?
Mr. Tom.
I'm back, remember? Madam Chair, members of the board, you've all been provided a copy of the items of the consent agenda. They include your operational expenditures for October, two budget adjustments for grant carryovers for the school totaling one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents. There's another disbursement of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents from the National Opioid Settlement Funds. And I did learn at the, the VACO conference why it was distributed the way it was, because there was five years included in this one disbursement, and they made it, they were explaining there's, there's so many settlements to be had, and two of them have been settled, one of them's with Johnson &amp; Johnson or Jameson Pharmaceuticals, and they have chosen to front-load five years of that settlement. There's funding for the library in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, budget adjustment of three hundred and fifty dollars from VACO, as Madam Chair Shackleton was unable to attend the conference, budget adjustment of a hundred and fifty for animal control. This is another disbursement from the Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate. And as the county, again, as the county doesn't have a sterilization program, we would forward that to the Southside SPCA. Lastly, there's a budget adjustment of one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-five cents for the sheriff's insurance proceeds from a damaged vehicle. There are no questions. Do you have a suggested motion in your package?
What's the gear-up grant? What's the gear-up grant? Was that for school?
The gear-up grant.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the consent calendar, consent items.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions or comments about correspondence or information items entering the package? Okay. Mr. Costin, would you like to provide your county administrator report?
Yes, ma'am. Just running through the report very quickly, the one item in the second paragraph concerning the solid waste RFP, we received one proposal. I'd like the board to provide some guidance. We have a choice of either moving on with that one proposal, which came from TRC. TRC is the new name for Draper aim. Or put it back on the streets and see if we can get some additional feedback. Mr. Rourke and I had some conversations at VACO. There are some other firms that were not on the CRC list that we used that could be approached. It's just a matter of what the board's preference is, either go forward with the one we have or see if we can get some additional ones. I would say we could put the RFP out next week and give it, I would say, at least a month, to give people the chance to do their research, and we could still end up with the same one, or we could end up with a couple more to look at. At this point, I want to stop my report and ask for the board's, the board's direction.
Madam Chair, I, I support what Mr. Costin was saying there. I was able to talk to several of the vendors, and three of them specifically were very interested in, in having the opportunity to bid, whether we do through a retention effort, or they will be looking for the RFP.
Anybody else have comments?
So, I'm taking that as, put it back out?
Yes.
Put it back out. Yeah, all right. Okay. You didn't need that in the motion, did you? Okay, okay, that's fine. Just direction. Moving down to the next paragraph, the second line, the demolition of the Pulley House was slated to begin the week I wrote this report. It had not begun, it has begun, it's underway right now.
I thought I heard it.
We have done some initial inquiries on the Section Eight housing request. We still have some additional information to be received and processed. So, I'm going to go off-report with some things that are a little bit more current, and this speaks to Mr. Abbott's concerns. Today, we received a phone call from the State Department of Elections wanting to know what our timeline was, and we said, well, that would be after the elections, remember? And they said, well, yeah, it's after the elections. And I said, well, yeah, we, we have some other things to do. But then, Mr. McRoberts and I had a previously scheduled meeting, this was one of the topics on, on that agenda. So, Mr. McRoberts and I are of the opinion that we could go forward with a revised ordinance specifying the election districts as you all voted on them, but then detailing out the polling places, and which exact precincts go to which polling places. I'll have to get some final direction from individual board members, but I think we could go next month, if that's the board's pleasure, to try to get this resolved by the end of this calendar year. The elections folks did say that the June primary is very likely, which means they've got to go out forty-five days into the middle of April to identify, you know, the, and notify people of what voting precincts and everything. So, the board, I ask again for the board's pleasure, do you want Mr. McRoberts and I to craft up that revised ordinance and proceed for next month?
Yeah, I like that, you know, the sooner the better on this redistricting, and then if we tighten that up right there, we, I would be able to follow right up and possibly the same meeting with the appointment to, as soon as it becomes effective, the redistricting with that, that appointment to the Planning Commission.
And we, we discussed making it effective with the certification of no objection by the Attorney General.
Yep.
With that, Madam Chairman, I have nothing else, other than to stand available for any questions or concerns you all might have.
Anything for Mr. Costin?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry. One, one more, this, this is apparently, I apologize, I'm falling apart here. Apparently, this is Katie Tomer night. Katie, would you come forward? On behalf of the Notaway Department of Social Services, I have a certificate of appreciation. This certifies, this certificate is presented to Katie Tomer in appreciation of your dedication and tireless efforts in support of our organization, and it's signed by Shannon Reed, Director, November seventeen, 2022. And it's signed by Shannon Reed, Director, November seventeen, 2022.
Hey, right.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Any final comments from members of the board, Vice Chairman Bowen?
None. Congratulate you to Katie, you did a fine job, and I'm glad you got to go to VACO this year as well. And I just wish all the board members and staff and even the lawyer out there, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes, ma'am, I'm gonna shorten my comments up for time here. The, first of all, I want to wish everybody, citizens, fellow board members, staff, everybody, a very safe and happy Thanksgiving. I just wanted to inform the board that next month, I intend to present a motion to the Board of Supervisors to support the request for the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, for her additional help in her office. I would suggest that we, you know, we could take a look at the funds coming from some school salary savings initially. We'll have a reassessment moving forward that could support as far as reoccurring funds. And the reason why I would like to support this is, I'll give you a scenario. If the citizens have to, do not have an attorney to present for them, to the judge, what you tend to run into is, let's say, let's say anybody, a lady, female, that's never been in contact with the police, never has been pulled over, and someone's trespassing on their property, okay? They have to go to a magistrate, get a warrant, okay? They stand in court with no representation from the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office because they're overwhelmed, when the individual that's charged may be a hardened criminal, used to the system, and also gets to have a defense attorney. And I only see the potential for a timid individual that's been victimized, and a judge see that as reasonable doubt. It absolutely puts our good citizens that are disadvantaged by not having the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office able to present to the courts to defend our good citizens. And so with that, you know, I've always believed that the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens should be our first priority. And I'm not saying that if you don't support it, that it's not, that's just my opinion. But this is to give us some time to look at our options, where the funds could possibly come from, because this absolutely puts the citizens at a disadvantage when they have to take on hardened criminals at misdemeanor levels.
Mr. Rourke of VACO, the Finance Committee of VACO, one of our priorities is to send that to the Journal Assembly, try to get the Journal Assembly to fund some of the constitutional losses.
And yes, sir, Mr. Costin and I actually presented that to several representatives during the regional meeting that we had a few months ago. And, you know, and I understand, if that funding comes down, that's great, but in the meantime, I don't want any good citizen being at a disadvantage. And if the funds come down, whether we're supplying it or not, if the funds come down through the comp board or whatnot, that's great. But I think we need to take a serious look. I mean, if our sheriff and our Commonwealth's Attorney make a request, I think it has to be priority. Now, I mean, they are our first line of defense outside of our officers on the street. And if we don't give them what they need to do their job, I feel like we are not, I feel like I would not be doing what I believe is the first priority of an elected official. Thank you.
Mrs. Simmons?
Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And Ms. Tomer, we appreciate you. Andrea, all the, all the staff. We appreciate you all, appreciate what you do. We're lucky to have you.
Mr. Bowen?
I just want to congratulate Katie and wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to enter closed session?
Do I have to read all this?
I move that the Board of Supervisor, Notaway County, Virginia, adjourned interclosed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by Notaway County regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of the legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding water services option 2.2-3711A3, discussion of consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically property in or near the town or crew 2.2-3711A1, assignment and performance of Pacific County employees specifically relating to personnel matters now pending in the county administrator, and 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body, specifically land use development.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This meeting will now continue in closed session.
Yeah, good choice.
Sure enough, I looked for it, didn't see it.
Yeah.
Twice a year, people have that stuff in the newspaper, it shows all the people that pay for stuff, right?
They pay it back.
It might be easier to have a, to hire a collection person.
Well, it's, it's easier to, they're, they're, they're taxed for it.
At twenty bucks an hour or something like that. Taxes, lawyers, it costs a few bucks.
Yeah, but it, what he does is he goes after three, two, and takes money off, gets recovered.
That's the way you go. That's true. The strange thing is, some of those high shit on the board that are, that raise the way, and who did it, most of them are not suitable. The strange, it, it, not that everybody, not that everyone should ever confirm, but you got, got some girls that if they didn't stop before, at least like that's a, that they should register, in discount, that are funny for, 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 and how many gives them, don't they? A mess on the back of the. I don't live in discount, when I did that. I, I, I can't, remember when they had permanent plates, you get a permanent plate, a permanent plate on the horse, right? Well, they were still charging the fee, even though you had, and they weren't supposed to have the permanent plate. Now, he's not on the board anymore, he was a former board member, he kept saying, all you're doing is taking money away from the fire and saving it. If you weren't supposed to get it in the first place, how are you taking something away? But they, it's the nickel and dime stuff that these, that a few of them are hard on, millions of dollars, they don't seem to, they do my fault. I have on my phone a copy of what the local match and effort was supposed to be for the school. It's just over five million dollars. They gave them 5.9 million. Where's 900,000 that you could have spent, doing what? They gave them five point nine million, whereas nine hundred thousand, that you could have spent, you were what?
Plus, I, I, yeah.
A lot of things.
How, how would you, uh, get, I heard, um, again, a question, how, how do you keep, uh, that, which you keep true, like that? All, see, you think those, you, no, because it, it, right now, it's.
Trust.
Right now, he just, like, so, it's a honor.
It's trust.
This way?
Well, it's trust.
When you get twenty thirty, you did it.
Trust, but they're not, there is the background of film, and I talked to, of, and, really, I would talk, to, to the first time, I first, I sent it off, it's twenty, twenty-three, yes. Oh, so, a shop, I'm considering telling her, tell her we're gonna shop by, I'm going right down, yeah, two thousand dollars, dirt, again, and some.
That's the most, actually, I know.
It's been, you know, with the street for a lot of years, right?
Yeah.
For one, at one time, used to have a gadget, you can scrub the odometer back to all those e-rubs. Yeah. It's harder to do now, so now, all you have to re, all you do is replace the instrument, the vehicle could have thousands of miles on it.
It's dark, I think.
Yep, you just put it in the instrument pad.
And it's actually legal, right, for you, kind of, I don't know, I think we used to do it, uh, these color shaped, all it was, like, the, mom, pop, color, they were bad, like, all the sand, you know? You call, they do a drill, they did right, oh, it's a drill.
That, that's what I.
Pull the odometer cable in, and put the chopper, the odometer cable, like, it's just right, and go back, and that's how they, and they told you, and you said, man, people have that, know, that stuff, where you're gonna go.
That's it. Something you want, make it work, a lot of work, you do.
We put it in, I was, jumper, I tried to find the bar.
No, that's, 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 that's what we, usually, we, we, it through my entire career, we call them pits. My guys would have a vehicle partner, me, every night, and I would drive a new truck home, or a car, it all, we, all, it all depends on where I was working. Now, when I was in Canada, I, I drove Crown Vic, Grand Marquis, but they usually gave me a police car, because we made the police cars out. And, in a little town that I lived in, in Delaware, there was like six bars, they always had a breathalyzer check, always. So I'd go over to the police car, right?
Cable?
And, no, they'd drive the window, and they'd say, wouldn't ask me for my driver's license or registration, and they'd say, where'd you get this car? And I would say, well, I drove, well, the end of the final lot today, you what? I said, we built it, in St. Thomas, right? Well, what are you doing, Brad? And I said, and, so you have to try to explain it, and then they would say, why are you, so, then I have to get out of the car, because inside the license plate that we would hang on the back, inside was all the paperwork, right? So I could get all, pull out all the paperwork, so, and then they would give you a coupon for Burger King, that you got a free Whopper or something, if you hadn't been drinking, right?
Yes, you're right, that's, who's, who's a Whopper?
So, I la, I mean, I laughed, the guy said, you have, if you can drink, and I said, no, not yet, I said, but I live three blocks from here.
Yeah, I go to Burger King.
I said, I said, give me, give me three minutes to get home, and I said, I might have one, but, driving, we would, and you're only allowed to put a certain number of miles on it. I was always told I had eleven and thirty miles, as soon as I was running, so, okay, well, I'd get, I'd go in one day, and a, well, like, a can, it's a cup of tea, and say, Sonny, I got a truck with a hundred and eighty-two miles on it. You what? Yeah, I got a hundred and eighty-two, ooh, girl, and so I would tell me, that I go find that guy, and say, why's that truck a hundred and eighty, probably makes more? Well, my wife broke down, she was in such and such, and I had to go pick her up, and, you know the rules? What? Did you want me to leave my wife in the middle of the fire, and, no, I wanted you to call your neighbor, and your neighbor gave you to get your money? So, what are you gonna do, change your, your pay off?
That's why I'm here. There's only a police car down here, you've never started it, you know?
Change his pay off. Otherwise, you have to sell a truck, what we call class A, right? It's a, it takes a huge chunk off it.
I need you to find your one, your old, uh, pit cap, have a nice old, uh, pit cap, broken at one sixty-eight, thou.
Oh, well, yeah, it's good, after one thirty, you're safe.
What, 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 this, the, I was, for, this, the, like, I was back, you gave us work back, and a thou, probably on the sixty-eight.
And I wouldn't worry about it.
That's, that's what it is, overall, four, if you want.
No, it's, I, the car that I'm driving, I usually, before the chip problem, I can order a vehicle every year. And, I ordered one, and then called me, and they said, well, we're canceling because we had a chip problem, so I've had this edge for three years, it'll be three years at the end of this month. I got s, almost sixty-three thousand miles on it, because I call it, people program this, are you sure? I can't order one? No, 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 you can't order one, yeah, blah, 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 and I said, well, you get this car back, it's what we really used. They said, excuse me? I said, so, already got, you know, last time I talked to him, it had sixty thousand miles, I spent sixty thousand miles on it. Wow, what is that car? I said, not quite three years old yet. Where do you go? I said, live in the middle of nowhere. I said, it's a, it's a thirty mile round trip, just go to a grocery store, you know? I said, no, so if you're going in, yeah, yeah, well, so they, I got, I'd be okay to order one, I ordered a, a new Escape, a twenty-three Escape, last month, so. Well, it's supposed to come in February, between February and June of next year.
Okay.
By then, I should only have maybe seventy-nine. Because, maybe we go to Florida, or, or, or. Yeah, well, I, I, uh.
Where you go take that from, you were?
My, my service. My servicing dealer is Ty, uh, Tri County Ford, Keyville, and, the company, I just turn by the five and everything over to them, and take the plate off of it, and, uh. They, it's called a program car then, and they either get to sell it, or they turn it into a, one of those wholesaler deals, and the wholesaler sells it. Now, if somebody wants to buy it, I can get the price of what the company will sell it for, I haven't done that in a long time. It's, it's just one of those perks that I get from retirement, so.
Yeah, that's good, I mean, it worked all those years you worked, right?
That, they, every now and again, they send me a check.
Get nice, you know?
This was my last facility, so, Kansas City, so they still think of me.
They still send you one in Kansas City, on, do you want to do this?
Just, and, and, they, they, they used to put my name on it. So they told me, they told me they're not sure what name I'm using anymore, so, so they just sent me a check.
Well, you usually put in there, and actually, you should be back by then.
Well, the strange thing is, I've been out twenty-two years.
At some point, you know, to turn off the work, maybe at some point, you're.
Many, many of the, uh, many of the guys that I've worked with are retired now, and there's still some that will call, we laugh, and then they'll say, I got a problem, okay, what is it? And then they tell me whatever their, their issue is, and I, I give them a couple of options, and they, they try, sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't.
Sonny, do they, uh, do you, you have to get, send a line, work, has you had a much turnover, or is it, you will have long, dead, most of that?
All depends on what you're still in, right? Uh, Chicago, Chicago, uh, is a tough, tough plan.
Oh, really?
Tough plan, well, you have gangs, or, there, you have gangs, so the body shop is run by one gang, the trim shop is run by another gang.
Oh, you get in trouble.
In trouble, so you don't, you don't, uh, you don't work out, you don't, you, you have to figure that out, without anybody telling you that they're in a gang. And, on any given Monday or Friday, you could be two hundred people short from starting a plant. And, when they come to work the next day, if they come to work the next day, you just ask them, no, you missed Monday, or you missed Friday, what happened? Things got a little rough in the hood. And, under the current system, they have to miss like eleven times before anything really starts to happen. Now, in Kansas, in Norfolk, when I was there, uh, you almost had to know someone at the plant to get hired, if we did any hiring. Rarely had to hire anyone, because long-term, they were there forever, or, they hired them, they were there, and there were families, right? I mean, my own dad, the kids, work right up, work right up? Everybody.
Yes, it's kind of back, like, I got an opportunity, you know, Ryan, you're like, um, over at Manion a few years ago, you know, placed, that's fire, but, close, they're a D Hamster main, it's, it's the old Hamster. And I also had a main, and, but, you have to give us two or five weeks back, and they make like, a lot more during time. But you say that that's what they, you breathe, so, so that's really what they, uh, I don't like the moment to, kind of, put that back, and walk, and, so, you say, you get your mom, you get your grandma, you get your kid, come along, and you're just, oh, oh, so.
Because in many cases, if you have a young person, a twenty-year-old that's maybe had a year on the job, right? And he's, he misses a few days, your uncle or the kid, you go to his dad, your son can't get to work, you know, on Mondays and Fridays. And, you need to go talk to him, and if you can't get it straightened out, then the company will take, but, we're gonna give you a shot at it.
Give you a shot at it, and they have passed it on twenty-three years, but.
And the dad, they were, they were tougher on the kid than any company will ever be.
Almost self-reason, because it makes the parent look bad, and the kid doesn't look so.
Because the parent, the parent is the one that got the kid in, and, so, it was.
Just like you refer, when you, you, uh, you first, about you want, you know?
You know, when you're, well, they, they changed the rules now, I think, the starting rate for most factory workers, in Ford's system is eighteen bucks a hour, uh, they can work up to twenty-three. Now, pensions, and a lot of that other stuff has changed, when I was working, uh, you could, uh, a new employee could be at twenty-three dollars, and I don't, I don't, that, they could get up to twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars a hour, and that's a line worker. So, it wasn't the, they were making chump changes, they were, they were doing really well.
Doing good, I'm just replacing it, getting out first, and the category.
Now, it's, now it's, now it's different, but, see, those of us that are old enough, I got a big raise coming, Joe got me a raise, oh, Joe, I get that paper, eighty point seven percent increase, I said, social security? If Joe lost you, that, or, so, I, my four oh one K, I was saying, I won't even open it anymore.
Everybody's four oh one K, it's hanging.
I do not open it anymore, my wife looked at one, and she said, what is this number? It's kind of minus in front of it, and I said, I said, that's what, uh, that's, that's, that's what voting, uh, did to us, uh, a year and a half ago, or two years ago. Who voted for that? I said, we didn't, but that's what happened.
Yeah, a lot of these things are always built.
Well, the banking industry, mine, I, 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 I'll be the first to admit, I'm okay with the answer. And, I have set up my wife so that if something happens to me, she's gonna be okay, so I call it her money, right? She doesn't care about it, she just knows it's somewhere, right? Well, the certificates of deposit went from two and three quarter percent to one and three quarter percent, to one and a half, down to a quarter of a percent. And I said, you know, I, I, I could take my money to Vegas, put it on, on some number at home, you know, that's, that's the same thing I'm doing here, and they said, oh, oh, you don't want me to do that. Why? And they, and the bank, they told me, said, well, we don't use any deposit money for our loans, because at the time, government was zero, they, the Fed, they all the money they needed, it's zero percent. Now it's four and a half, or four and three quarters, and, and, things are a little different now, they're, they're starting to talk a little, but, I hate it, how would you like a different percent on your, sort of, your deposit account? But a two-year treasury notes, four point three, four point four percent, two-year treasury note, you just have to know how to get in, and open an account, and trust computers are secure, to open an account with the Fed, and transfer money into it.
That's probably more about the, right now, the CDs, unless you have a lot of money, and, was this, uh, past sixty years, before you do a layback?
Well, it takes a long time, I have mine at eighteen months, so, and it does okay, it's, uh, other than, you know? Joe, what's that, I don't know, it's, Joe, this, Joe last term, had, sixty-one, and, and, because it had a lot higher interest.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know, Joe's, he's, he's, yeah. Well, but, see, when you get my age, you always wonder, I will be here tomorrow, so.
Okay, yeah, was that a, a question? Interesting, you know, I can, you're a, uh, probably did, uh, bank, I don't know, it's, I only a year, but, I didn't, I didn't, my, I, I did two, three percent on the sales. That's pretty good.
Yeah, now it's one ten, one ten.
One ten's a percent, I'm telling you, like, though, yeah, see, if you put it in the ball, they should all do the same, man, you could, you could, right now.
Yeah, I have five twenty-nine accounts for two of my grandkids, the two that will talk to me, and, uh, they're, they're about, they're starting to look a bit shaky.
I would think, let me, uh, I mean, it might be a while, but, uh.
Well, I think the, uh.
Twenty, I was in point, for, for, there.
I know, starting in January, we have, uh, broken, that's not broken government, it's divided government, the house being one side, the senate being the other, sleepy Joe doing three, so.
What we saw, BBC, you just, basically.
Well, this weekend, he turns eighty, now, I'm not eighty yet, I'm eighty-four.
Do you hear the bell, you know?
This weekend, this weekend, he turns eighty.
Oh, he failed on shots.
That's, that's not unusual.
Our country, and, and that'll be all of the huge time.
He falls, going up and down airplane, sits right here, next question, I don't, I can't call, I don't know, where is he? Where is she?
Thanks.
I, I mean, I'm, I don't know, maybe, well. No, she's just hanging out. You know, you used to see, she doesn't do any, any other higher administration side, you would see the vice president, it's sorry.
Will you write mine, I mean, you saw, where, you.
Well, Pence was busy for four years, when Trump was there.
Yeah, but he was still.
Yeah, but Pence was busy, you know?
Well, even, even, I think, five, the hall, would have, like, does, um, he, he, does, she's, 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 she's.
But they, what, the, the only good news, I mean, say, I need your pieces, you're, the only good news I heard was that Nancy Pelosi is not one to hold any social responsibility, she's not retiring, but she's not gonna hold any position on social.
That's because they got the house, well, the whole, they got the house, they were like, judging, plus, saying that you were, the other guy, they, uh.
And as we were talking, two good people, I'm right, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're on for a scrap, right? In District Two, that's why I want these folks to come, it was broken, against, uh, Santa Claus.
That's kind of Tom, sorry, first chance.
Hey, Higgins, I don't think he's running. Well, Bill Higgins and Shelley, Shelley might retire, he's got thirty-some years, the school system, her husband just retired, so. Yeah, well, he, uh, 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 yeah. Yeah, I, I, uh, Bill and I, I consider him a friend, but we disagree on so many, you know, those policy.
He was a model.
So, yeah. You were in those choppers, I fell out of it. He wasn't a pilot.
Well, you know, look me up, Ashley, yeah.
No, I, when I was, I was in the service, it's a long, long time ago. I used to joke, I used to wear those three-pointed hats, you know, us and George. But, uh, no, I, when I left the service, back in nineteen sixty-three.
You were forty. Ten to thirty years.
After, after basic in AIT, I went over, I went over to Germany. And I'm sure that the only reason I ended up where I did was because my last name starts with N. So my record had me on top, and they pulled that I had, whatever they were looking for. And they pulled me out of the room with thirty-five guys. And they sent me to Heidelberg, which was, I learned later to be at headquarters. And I ended up working for, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Black, that was, like, working for your mom. She made these cookies and all that kind of stuff. And I got her, and I got promoted rapidly, and I was an E-five at seventeen months. From the day I entered the service, it, you know, seventeen months later, I was an E-five. And then the Signal Brigade was disbanded, and we became Strategic Communications Command. And I became one of the three non-coms that were in the office of the general staff. So I had five secretaries, I had a clerk, and the command sergeant major, and me. Everybody else was a Lieutenant Colonel Warburg, and a one-star, one end of the building, and a two-star at the other. Well, the two-star had a son, it's a captain, that was himself, he stayed, so, like, January of nineteen sixty-five, he told me I was going over to help him. And I was still, uh, a little off the rocker, because there should be no boats over there. I was, I even seen that on German TV. You know, "No, it's safe, you're going to sign on, it's safe," you know, blah, blah, blah. So I said, "Well, can I take two of my friends?" And he said, "You can take whoever you like." So the three of us were TDY, so temporary duty, Southeast Asia. We were there. Well, it was pretty, early September, we were going to all of these camps. We'd go out with these old-fashioned Corski helicopters, right? And I always joke, they're just like a pheasant, they don't take off real well, and then they would drop down and pick up speed, and then they would rise up again. Well, they got a door, you know, not that big, and they got a door gunner clipped in one side. So, um, we're sitting, the three of us, door gunners clipped in, and, and we take off. And as, just as he rises up and starts to drop, we're turned this way, helicopter looking down. And whoever was at the top of those trees started shooting at us. Well, I killed the door gunner. So I slid over and took the door, the gun, and started spraying the top of those trees. Well, the next thing I felt was, it felt more like I got hit with a, a poker, you know, some bird. The bullet hit here, it came out over here, but they call it a flesh wound, you know, I was sixty pounds lighter than it went, you know, because I was turned.
Wow, where did you go with that?
It, it, no, it just, it just flipped me over, just like, just like you would split open a watermelon. So it just flipped me over, right? Well, then he jerked the helicopter, and I fell. And Big Weldon tackled, caught my legs, and Paul caught Weldon by his belt buckle. I was hanging out in the helicopter, Weldon was halfway out of that helicopter, and Paul was trying to drag his boat back in. And that took like a week. At least that's how long it seemed, hanging out there.
Hanging there over the tree, you still firing?
Well, no, uh, I don't know how many of those pajamas were fly in the air, but there were some. And, but I, we didn't, I didn't even think about that, I was more concerned, was I get, how do I get back in the chopper? So they pulled me back in, and then we flew in. And they put, I don't know, it was a hundred and twelve stitches to close up, uh, the deal. Well, then I got to come home, right, the three of us flew back to Germany. I don't know, it was, three weeks later, my son was born, so.
Wow, who's normal.
So I, I got to come home, so I'm okay with that, you know, it's.
Did you get all the T- battles, yeah?
No, no, I didn't ask for any, didn't want any, didn't. But it came in handy because my father passed, I was one of those guys whose father passed away. One week before I was due to come home, and we were staying in a, in a little villa, you know, that they had, because we moved out of our apartment. And so the commanding general sent his car, picked us up, brought us into the headquarters. I had some major typing up my orders to send me back to the States. So they gave me an emergency change of station, and he sent me to Fort Wayne in Detroit, Michigan. So after the funeral and all that stuff, I went into Fort Wayne. And I, the guy said, looks at my records, and said, "I can promote you right now, but you'll stay another three years." And I said, "Nah, unfortunately, I can't do that." I said, "My father passed away, and I still have three younger sisters that are at home. And I had six older sisters that were, uh, gone." I said, "No, I have to come, stay with them, I'm not." And then I said, "So let me discharge, well, we can't discharge, we gotta send you to Fort Sheridan alone." I said, "Okay, so can we call us?" We did all the calls, we talked to everybody, got, got records forwarded, all that kind of stuff. And I said, "Okay, I'll show up there Friday morning." And the guy said, "Yeah, get it Friday, then, you'll be out by then." Drive to Fort Sheridan, get there at seven-thirty. Go in and see some civilian. To make a long story short, after talking to the civilian, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a captain, a major. I finally said to the major, and this is a guy, he had a chest full of medals, you know, he was, I said, "Could you tell me where the commanding general's office is?" He said, "Well, darling, can I tell you? I'll take you there, smart ass." So we go over, and we go into his office, and I asked the secretary to use the command phone. And I show her my credentials, she pulls out the command phone, I pick it up, well, I was ready to depend on it. They answer, and I said, "I'd like to speak to General Meyer." It didn't take a minute, General Meyer's on the phone, and I said, "General Meyer, this is Sonny, and he said, " "First name was, is condolences about the boss of my father." And I said, "Sir, I don't know how you know that." And then he reminded me that he was the general, and he knew everything. And I said, "Sir, do you remember that, World John, you told me if there was anything I ever needed, give me a call." And he said, "Yeah, I remembered that," and I said, "Well, this is that call. Where are you?" I said, "I'm at Fort Sheridan, Illinois." So he says, "It's Smokey there." So I look at the secretary, I says, "There's somebody here named Smokey." He said, "Well, that's our commanding general, but nobody calls for that, that's for General, General Myers, who'd like to speak with him." So she gets up, disappears into another office. I hear a click, and then I hear, "Sonny, you can hang up the phone now." And I said, "Yes, sir," and I look at the phone. Couple of minutes later, this two-star comes out, and he looks at the major, and he said, "Do you know who this is?" The major says, "No, I'm about to learn, aren't I?" And he said, "General Meyer says he knows more stars than the people that are in Hollywood. And he's worked for more generals than any one NCO that he's ever met. And you're gonna get him discharged today." And he said, "Well, it's up, and the general says, 'I'm taking him to lunch. When we get back, papers better be on that desk.'" "Well, you'll be, well, your next duty station, eh, it won't be as nice as this one." We went to lunch, came back, and all the paperwork was there, except he couldn't pay me. And I said, "That's okay, it's okay, I know government's good for it, I'm okay." Now, I could leave, right, so when I went, I had to give, the only thing I kept was my duffel bag. It's the only thing I kept, all my other stuff I needed, because I said, "There'll be people coming back from Southeast Asia, and they will lose their stuff, and, you know, you can help someone." I went home, and, and it took about a month before the money started rolling in, but the checks finally showed up. That's how I got out of the military. It was, I remember, I would have made staff sergeant if I wasn't as mouthy as I was. I was even mouthier when I was younger than I am today, because I told the command sergeant major that he should look me up when he retires. And he said, "Why don't I do that?" I said, "Because I wanna help you find the jobs, they're gonna need all, they'll help you begin."
That's, uh, good careers, huh?
Well, I was fortunate, I, after that, I, I went and applied for a job at Fuller, and, and had two interviews, the second interview, they took me. And I will never forget, I hired in at a four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a month. That was almost twice what I was making in the military, because I was coming home at two-fifty-five. And I made four cents, like, I am rich, I am, you know, I have a easy street. And then eight, nine days later, I got a raise to four-ninety-one, don't know why, I do now, but I didn't then. It was because of the September contract raise. Everybody got a, I don't know, two or three percent increase in permanent wage. And then I spent the next thirty-five years figuring out how to do it right. Yeah, I'm too, I'm too bad, you have, I need some reason.
With the long session, with the three, three things that they think.
Unless they got the, you got a three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar salary back there, because those things got a hook, you know.
See ya, Andrew.
Heaven.
See you in the morning.
Uh-huh, yeah. Hey, you were spot on on that timing, late seven-thirty-five, I think.
You were?
You were spot on on your guess, but, I mean, it was seven-thirty-five, but you got there, and actually, earlier than you got.
I'm glad I got here when I did. I had to, uh, I had to meet some friends in the fire service that were coming in other countries, and they invited me to come to Victoria. So we did it really fast, and I told them, I said, "I hate to leave." We all took a picture, you know, did a picture so they could post it. Yeah, yeah, I got a buddy that's, uh, Indonesia, he's an Indonesian fire chief, and he's at a base over there, you know, he runs it. So he's, he deer hunts in Lutonburg, he comes home. Yeah, I'll see you, uh, hey, Brian, may I ask something, or, uh, something?
Congratulations, Mary Rose.
Thank you, very appreciate it.
Do you, do you leave, uh, do you leave on the channel? Uh, so, look, did you, did you get my, uh, did you get my email about the education, okay?
Oh, did you check your phone?
Oh. Okay, oh, you sent, they're, they're in this, no, I haven't yet, I haven't.
And, and I mean, no offense, but while the CBA lady was talking.
Oh, worry, you're firing on me, okay.
I would, you, I would check on a capital, or you, or, or, or engineers, or.
All right, so, um, let me know though, if you want to add anything before he goes back, and we can still talk, of course. But I think we captured, maybe, you talked about.
I thought, I sent a, you.
They still have four trigger chains, you can't do the same thing that Jay killed, I mean, with a trigger chain, right, these wells.
Oh, that's really good.
And, you know, as far as generated, uh, I got the word back this week on, you know, right, the, uh, we, we, we put in, like, a landfill, you know, so.
It's like, uh, whole.
Yeah, crazy, it's kind of, they shouldn't have this form right here, it's great. So state, well, state it, uh, I'm teaching at Old University, versus these old brands, which is somehow hard to ship back, but it's short, I'm saying. So if you want to continue, uh, to build a brand, they stated, there's no regional relation sharing of any resources. Uh, uh, oh, they don't, I said, well, yeah, see, if I were to share, the general is so, more, kind of, reliable, it's so, you know, again. I mean, the, they aren't that expensive, he's probably, that's why, he's, how share.